The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Ken Kyler, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the September 14, 2022 Board
Meeting. In keeping with the board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Citizen participation will be held at approximately 5:15 PM and then again later on the agenda if needed. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Also, board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have four sets of minutes to approve. I'll start with, I need a motion for the board minutes from August 17.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the board minutes from August 31st.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Kyler, which set, the 3:30 or the 5:00 PM?
Now, they're the two work sessions for the actual board
Oh, that's the board meeting, okay, thank you.
Any comments, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I need a motion for the work session at 3:30 PM on August 31st.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Kyler, I do have a comment about the, just at the very end of that work session, we had requested, there were several pages of statistics that were provided as part of the security work session and that we didn't get to, but we said that we wanted to bring those back and make sure that we addressed them at the strategic plan work session in October, so I just wanted to have that noted.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and say a sentence you want added to the minutes?
Oh, okay, it could be something as simple as, "The board asked to review the statistics provided as part of the strategic plan work session in October."
Any more discussion? All those in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, the work session on August 31st, the minutes for 5:00 PM, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Mr. Kyler, I would also just add at the end of that, that we did do a tour of Freedom Elementary School in advance of that work session that we had talked about.
Okay.
Well, because it's, the very la, the, I'm sorry, the second to last sentence says, "An additional work session is scheduled for Wednesday, September 7th, 2022, in the boardroom to further discuss the SARC recommendation," and we could just say, "as well as to take a tour of the Freedom Elementary School in advance."
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Carroll County Student Government Report.
All right, hello, my name is Nikki Zhang, the Carroll County Student Government Association President. Unfortunately, I have been unable to attend the past few Board of Education meetings, but that just means I have plenty of updates to provide you all. On September 1st, CCSJA hosted our advance retreat where all attending students got workshop certified, meaning that they will have the opportunity to present a workshop at our CCSJA Fall General Assembly. Advance is typically the event that introduces many students to CCSJA and what CCSJA does, and as always, we encourage all students to get involved in CCSJA and student government in whatever way they want to. As I mentioned before, we have an upcoming CCSJA Fall General Assembly. Our theme this year is CCSJA Reignited, and our General Assembly is based around the idea of sparking leadership. We are hoping to encourage more middle schools in Carroll County to begin putting more emphasis on student government. We have planned feeder school discussions to bridge the relationships between middle schools and high schools to encourage more students to stay in student government as they progress from middle school to high school. Our General Assembly will take place at South Carroll High School on October 19th. We encourage any interested students to reach out to their student government advisors as more information comes out. On a separate note, for those of you running for a Board of Education position in the upcoming election, I sent an invitation regarding the Board of Education forum hosted by CCSJA with questions from students. At this point in time, all candidates have confirmed their attendance and CCSJA is looking forward to this event. It will take place in this room, the Charles Ecker Room, on September 20th at 6 o'clock. We welcome all students to attend. Coincidentally, this is also the week that CCSJA has chosen to have Start With Hello Week, created by the Sandy Hook Promise Organization. While the actual Start With Hello Week is next week, there will be Sources of Strength Training throughout that week, so we opted to move it up a week, this week being September 12th to 16th. CCSJA has sent individual schools little paper tents to set up at their lunch tables to encourage and invite other students to sit at their table if they don't have a place to sit. However, we have also encouraged to SJS over the county to have mini activities such as writing encouraging chalk messages, or taping up little index cards, or reading quotes on the announcements, and so on. I believe that this event could be incredibly successful and positive, especially for it being, you know, the second week of school, and that this event, we can continue to do and improve on year after year. I believe that is all, and I thank you for your time, and have a great rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patagia.
I just want to say thank you so much, I think that is a wonderful idea. I think that is inviting, it is inclusive, it is just trying to make sure students can interact together, and a simple hello is all it really takes. So thank you guys so much for doing that.
Public comments, citizen participation, Ms. Patagia.
To have an orderly presentation of comments in the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed to address the board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have completed the blue card in its entirety will be chosen to address the board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write the board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question and answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the board should relate to recent agenda items, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Personal matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation at approximately 5:15 PM. There is an opportunity for an additional citizen participation later in the meeting as we get to it on the agenda. The board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for the board members or the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the board meeting. In lieu of signs, if you are unable to complete your comment in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the board in writing. Excuse me, those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or the board members.
Right now, I have nine cards. The first speaker is Diana Flores.
Silencing, homophobic, scary, racist, fear-driven, ignorant. All these words and more are what I have heard used to describe Carroll County. However, I hold hope that, I hold hope in the fact that we can change that narrative. You, the Board of Education, can play a key role in changing that narrative. But we have been moving backwards. This flag policy was passed. Not just that, but in this very room, there were horrible things said about the LGBTQ+ community and many other BIPOC groups, said by both those speaking during citizen participation and even by several board members. And now, we see pictures of a MAGA flag at South Carroll High School, and hear from multiple students that their SROs have the Blue Lives Matter flag up in their school, both of which are against the flag policy which you passed. If the proposed revisions to citizen participation are passed, you will also be silencing many more voices. You will not be allowed, you will not be allowing for new concerns to be brought to your attention and be addressed. The flag policy and the proposed revisions to citizen participation are reinforcing the negative perceptions of this county. Please stand by your students, stand by your community, stand by the people that you are supposed to be helping. Change the negative perception of Carroll County, revoke the flag policy, and do not pass revisions, the proposed revisions to citizen participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Scanlon.
Like all of you, I received a lot of emails concerning the potential redistricting in the southern part of the county. The Southern Area Redistricting Committee did a great job and should be commended for their work. And I would also like to thank this current board for putting the brakes on the redistricting plans. We all know how distressing this process can be, especially for the families who are impacted personally. I think we all agree that redistricting is extremely complex and it involves much more than numbers. We have to take into account travel time for students, starting times for the schools, keeping neighborhoods together, cleaner feeder patterns, and it's no small feat. And as you noted, the blueprint will create even greater demands on our buildings. That's why we should look at capital improvements to our existing schools. So moving forward, I encourage you to authorize the feasibility studies for both schools, Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle. To get a more complete picture of where we are going, we need the most data that we can collect now. We know that the farther out projections are, the less reliable they become, but that is a tool we have to best anticipate the direction we take. There are other schools we need to look at besides the two mentioned. Carroll Town, ah, Carroll Town, Linton Springs, and Piney Ridge are basically at capacity and projected to be over capacity in a year or two. Moving north, Cranberry Station, Sandy Mountain, Westminster Elementary are in similar situations. And as we all know, those elementary school students move on to middle school. And Oklahoma Road is projected to be over capacity by 2024. And yes, there is a difference between state capacity and functional capacity. And I've worked in an overcrowded school, as is Mrs. Herbert, and it is difficult. It is more than just the number of students in the building and desks in classrooms. Overcrowding impacts the culture and dynamics within the school, within the building. Bathrooms, cafeteria, media center, the auditorium if there is one, kids bumping in the halls, and for the educators, there's office space, work rooms, equipment to consider. So everyone becomes a little more tense and a little more anonymous in an overcrowded building. So as we move forward, it is imperative that we look ahead and plan for what will be best for our students. Oh, I see, there's some time on the clock. I totally understand what you felt, that you felt a need to revise the current participation guidelines, and I get it, I do. But I hope you realize that there are some real logistical issues that need to be addressed before implementing a new policy. And I've had a lot of people say to me that, you know, when you get on the board, you need to do something about these marathon meetings, so let me just throw out an idea. Maybe we could go back to two meetings a month, you know, one would be mostly for public comment, one for business. So I thank you for your time, and let's have a great and normal school year.
Thank you. I'm really sorry if I mispronounced this name. Samaya?
Good evening, board members. I am here to demand an apology. All of you here today has proven within just the first month of school that the new flag policy is intended to censor the marginalized voices. Last week, we saw an Instagram post with a MAGA flag over the memorial of a student at South Carroll High School. Yet, instead of handling the situation as professional adults, numerous student accounts were blocked for speaking out against this. And in addition to this, the account was later privated. Over the past week, we have also heard multiple complaints from students that their SROs openly displayed the Blue Lives Matter flag. These are clear violations of the flag policy. So every student in CCPS deserves an apology and revocation of this heavily biased policy. So instead of further suppressing the student voices in our community, let us work together to further elevate student voices, unite our community, and address the issues in our school system. Thank you. Also, love the tie, Commissioner Fager.
Thank you. Next speaker is Wendy Nova.
Hi, I'm here to talk about the citizen participation policy. I understand that you have to limit the speakers. I think some months, there have been as many as 50 that have shot, 50 people that have signed up. My concern is transparency in the selection process. I hope it will be announced how the speakers were selected. I would also like to suggest that exceptions be made for people that live out of the county. If they live in another county but work in our schools, they are stakeholders. There could be a time when it is appropriate and necessary for a subject matter expert to come and speak, and they might not reside here. This policy would harm students with divorced parents. A parent could have children in our schools even if they do not reside here. A parent should have the right to participate in citizen participation. I think the things I've requested are things that the general public would agree with even if we agree on the little else. This is one thing that's unifying all of us. It is also fair to expect the adults to follow the rules we expect of our students, especially when you consider students attend these meetings and watch online. As listed in our calendar, our students have a right to be treated with respect by all and to access and participate in a self and well, safe and welcoming educational environment free of bullying and harassment, discrimination, and disrespectful behavior. Our students have a right to protection from harassment. During citizen participation, there are frequently commenters that refer to the family and supporters of the LGBTQ community as criminals. These students are referred to as mentally ill. I know the argument is that there is a right to free speech, but that does not apply here. You clearly have the power to determine what speech is allowed if you can restrict people from addressing the BOB or only speak on specific topics. You can also ban speech accusing people of criminal actions such as pedophilia and grooming. Referring to students as mentally ill should never be allowed. Why are we protecting adults that attack our students but not the students? Allowing these actions keeps some students from being able to attend our BOE meeting or even listen online because they know they will not be free of harassment. Because we receive state and federal funds, we are subject to state and federal regulations. Our state passed the Inclusion Act prohibiting state-funded county boards of education and schools from discriminating on the basis of race, nationality, sexual orientation, gender identity, and other identity markers. Title IX protects students from discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Our state and our county are willing to protect each student, why won't you? Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maureen Aversa.
Good evening, board. I'm here to talk about the citizen participation policy. While I agree that a change is needed, I disagree that the meetings were a circus. The meeting that was loud, that was referenced as a circus, was due to students protesting your pride flag policy. I commend them for doing so. I do, however, have concerns with the transparency and how speakers will be picked. We have seen, under this policy, we have seen favoritism from this board, most notably in the handpicking of the Family Life Committee. That particular committee does not represent our community as a whole. It mimics the ultra-conservative Christian values held by this board. If speakers are chosen in the same manner, we are silencing parents and students in our community. Attempts or the appearance to silence those who do not agree with this board is a dangerous message to send. I hope that you will reconsider how individual speakers are chosen. Transparency with this process may go a long way to build a bridge with members of the community. A small bridge, perhaps, just a footbridge, but it would be a start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kit Hart.
Good evening. 235 years ago, the delegates to the Constitutional Convention met for the last time to sign the document that they created, recognizing all who were born in the United States or by naturalization have become citizens. We, as a nation, commemorate that event each year on September 17th, the anniversary of the document's ratification. It is a day upon which we can unite as a country around the vision that 39 courageous leaders had for a free and fair republic. In an attempt to instill that vision onto future generations, Congress passed a provision in 2004 stating in mandate 108447 that every school and college which receives federal funding must teach about the Constitution on or around September 17th. We must ensure that our children learn the value in and contents of the founding principles of our most sacred document, the Constitution. Carroll County's Chapter of Moms for Liberty, in partnership with the 917 Society, is pleased to assist with the commemoration of Constitution Day by providing each eighth-grade student with their own pocket Constitution, which also includes the Declaration of Independence and Oath of Citizenship. We will be distributing these materials to every middle school in the county and hope that all teachers will accept these items for use in their lessons. These pocket constitutions can be found on the common tables in each middle school starting on Friday, September 16th. Additionally, the 917 Society offers a variety of free lesson plans, videos, and games which may be accessed on their website for teachers to use at their discretion. That information will be included in a letter to each school. Teachers who submit a picture of the Constitution in their classrooms to the 917 Society are entered to win $200 for their classrooms, and a total of 12 teachers will be selected. Of course, if teachers would prefer not to have their pictures published on the 917 Society's website, that request will be honored. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve the teachers and students of Carroll County in this small but impactful way. It is our sincere hope that these tools assist each of them as they participate in celebrating the document which established the founding principles of the greatest nation in the history of the world. May God bless America.
Thank you. The next speaker is Campbell Walsh.
Okay, hi, members of the board. Accidentally just deleted my whole speech off my phone, so I guess I'm going to do this without my speech written up. So my concerns are with the new provisions to the public commenting. I worry that with the switch from the in-person to the online registration that people won't know how to find it, so they won't be able to register. It's already pretty hard to find the, like, written public comment form if you don't know the CCPS homepages, like, layout, so that's one of my issues with that. Another one of my issues is that speakers will only be able to speak on topics that are in the current agenda, which I fear will limit the ability for citizens to bring issues that you guys might not have noticed to your attention, such as what other people have said with South Carroll High School allowing a MAGA banner to cover up a student's memorial banner at their game and posting images of that online on social media. And that's, I wouldn't say that's inherently your guys' fault if you guys didn't know that that happened, but there would be no real good way to bring it to your attention because you guys do get a lot of emails on the daily, so it's hard to email you guys and know that you guys will be able to read it and see it. So that's a concern that I have. And then, my last concern that I really have with it is that it would limit the speakers from, any speakers in the audience, to just Carroll County citizens. A lot of our teachers and staff and administration are from outside of the county, just because we don't have enough teachers inside of Carroll County to populate all of our schools. So I fear that all of those teachers, their voices and opinions on current educational policies or administrational policies that are already in place inside of the schools will not be heard. And there's some of the voices I think we should be listening to the most because they are in the schools, on the floor, they know how the policies are working, how the policies aren't working, if their administration is implementing the policy effectively, so yeah, those are, those are my main concerns with that.
Thank you.
Campbell, thank you so much. I really appreciate it when our students come out and speak. Thank you very much, Campbell. Next speaker is Flex Cullen. If I mispronounced your name, please correct me.
Felix Cullen.
Felix, thank you.
Thank you. I'm here to speak on the policy change for citizen participation. I don't, I understand the need for something to change. I understand that, you know, the meetings have to move on, that things have to be addressed, but limiting the voices of the people I don't think is the right answer, especially not in this way. I believe that inherently, when a situation brings 50, 60, 70 people who want to speak on an issue, it's inherently an issue that needs to be spoken about. The community cares about it enough that you all should be willing to maybe find a solution that still hears all of those voices. Being able to pick 15 people for, I mean, for what we understand at this point, based on the way the policy written is, you know, an arbitrary 15 people, I mean, how will it be done? Will it be the first 15? Will it be, you look at the comments and say, "Well, this person seems to be on this side or that side"? How, how is this going to be done so that the voices of the community, the entire community, are able to be heard? Have a couple more things written here. This also would, I feel it would disproportionately affect families without consistent internet access since that's going to be, according to the policy, one of the main ways to, to sign up, to have your voice heard. And also affect those with two parents working outside of the home. It's already hard enough to figure out, well, not to figure out when these meetings are, but to make it to these meetings, if you're, if you have two parents working outside of the home, don't get off till 5:30, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock. It's already difficult enough for us to make our voices heard. Limiting it in this particular way, I think, only makes that a little bit more difficult. Let's see. Also, based on, based on the criteria for how people are going to be chosen, it leaves open the possibility that the first 15, 20, 30 people that have an opinion about this, who hear about it before anybody else, all sign up and essentially review bomb, you know, a situation. you know, a situation, a policy that's to be discussed or a concern that the people have. And I think that that, I think that's a legitimate concern that needs to be addressed in the Let's see. The final thing is that I feel like, I feel like limiting public voices in this particular way sort of gives the impression that you guys have already made up your mind on an issue, that you think that only fifteen people on an issue that could be big enough for fifty people to show up, that that would be enough. So it gives a bad impression as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Casa? I'm sorry.
Like others, I have concerns regarding the public comment policy, limiting or setting the topic or the agenda, like, prior to the meeting, that's, in a lot of ways censorship because, you know, the board gets to set it, and if there's pressing issues that need to be heard, you know, those need to be heard. Regarding, you know, disorderly times, I mean, I think the board's done a pretty good job so far at like moderating things, limiting the non-speakers. And just, and also hearing people because these are, you know, politically tumultuous times, and, you know, people participating is a good thing, and being able to be, have everyone's perspective heard is, of course, a very good thing, important thing. But, yeah, I don't, I just, I see this down the road in the wrong hands, being used as a weapon against opposition, so, regardless, and I think both, well, any, from any perspective, it's, it's just not good, so. Yeah, and then also, on a kind of tangent, wanted to bring up, like, economics, education. I'm not completely up on the curriculum for the schools' economics education, but I think that's very important, especially for young people, learning how to, you know, plan a budget, saving, things like that. We had those a little bit when I was in school, but I think there could have been more about it. Also, just fundamentals of economics on like policy, like monetary policy, how banking works, just basic stuff like that, because that's kind of pivotal to, you know, also how the broader economy and the country works, how, because that, that's kind of at the root of a lot of policy that happens in the U.S. and has a big effect on people. So I think economics education is very important. One book I might recommend is Economics, One Lesson by Henry Haslett. It's a very succinct book. I think it's like one hundred fifty, two hundred pages, but it's, it's very good on like fundamentals of economics, and probably something that every high schooler in the county should read and be familiar with, because I just, I see a lot of people don't understand, you know, fundamental, fundamental economics, and they make bad decisions, not only in their life, but also in decisions that affect the community and the nation regarding how the government functions. So just wanted to add that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more cards? I have one more speaker. Last speaker, Dorian Rogers.
Good evening, all. Definitely great to be able to speak, so I appreciate everything that you all do for our schools and for our nation. And you referenced the importance of the Constitution. That's definitely important. As a political science major myself during my undergrad at Salisbury University, I can say that it is very important that we are not only articulating the importance of a multicultural democracy, but how does it work out when it pertains to ensuring that everybody is educated, informed, and empowered to make a difference within our communities? So with that being said, I wanted to specifically attest to the citizens' participation proposal that was brought before you all. Ultimately, we as the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, in alignment with the organizations, the youth out here that are promoting the image and the need to oppose this proposal. Again, when we're talking about promoting the importance of democracy, we want to make sure that we're matching actions to our words. And so this policy really had a very skeptical presence attached to that, especially when it pertains to people being able to not only take time off work to ensure that they're able to participate, but based on that, how are they able to utilize their time to, again, bring the solutions necessary so that we can create those action-oriented solutions, not just for our partisanship, not just for agendas, but for our youth, our students that are going through, and they are doing what, again, they are intended to do, which is make our world a better place through the education that they're obtaining, whether it's through K through twelve or, of course, obtaining higher education. And so with that, we really want to make sure that we're promoting policies that are consciously reflective of, again, that democratic procedures, ensuring that they're able to plug in to boards of education, so their county councils. Again, we're here in the Board of Ed, but this isn't just within one body. This is within our local, state, and federal elections, regardless of partisanship, because, again, our vision is our youth. So we as the NAACP, and forgive me, I serve as the president of the Maryland State Conference Youth and College Division, so I oversee all of our Maryland units of the NAACP, whether they're collegiate chapters, whether they're youth councils, whether they're circles. But again, it has been very clear that there is opposition, and so not only do we ask that the board oppose this, but work to ensure that we are bringing everybody to the table to develop a more equitable, accessible, and inclusive process, not just on the website, but ensuring that when people come to these sacred spaces, they're able to bring the solutions forward, bring the concerns, the questions, because, again, we're entrusting you all as our elected representatives to, again, lead us in the right direction. And you, when you all succeed, we succeed as communities. And so that's all that I would wish to recommend before the NAACP. I want to thank Carroll County kids for equity. They are really doing a lot of great work out here, and so we're excited to work with them. And so, honorable board, let's continue to work together to ensure that we are promoting the importance of a multicultural democracy by the people and for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to employee groups, if you don't mind, you look very comfortable, so the superintendent would like to make some clarifications for some of the public comments.
Several speakers made reference to a MAGA banner hung on the South Carroll High School stadium during a football game on Friday night. And so I just wanted to say that I heard about that late Friday night, and when I did, I spoke with other members of cabinet to try to find out how it had happened. And so I just wanted to explain that we have a new policy and regulation that we are implementing this school year, IMDB, which is our political neutrality policy and regulation. And in that, in the regs, it does state that our students are able to state their political And staff at the game that night, some of the staff believed that the banner was an expression of students' political beliefs and therefore was able to be hung on the stadium. So what we, what we did over the weekend is speak to the staff and ensure an understanding that, yes, individual students are allowed to communicate their, their speech, but going as far as hanging a banner on an, a pertinent of Carroll County Public Schools stadium or any other place in, in a, in a school is, is not what the policy intended. And so, you know, as we move forward and we are implementing new policies and regulations, there will be a learning curve. We have trained all of our staff in the new policies and regs when everyone came back in the fall, and I think everyone is doing their best to try to implement those. And so, you know, as, as we, as we learn, and if there are any errors that are made, we will try our best to correct those as they happen and do better in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Employee groups.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, Board members, and Commissioner. I am Celeste Jordan, President of CCEA. About six years ago, CCA brought Vince DeVivo, a community outreach specialist from the, for the United States Attorney's Office, to present Innocent Stolen: Protecting Our Children Online. It is a powerful program in the evening for adults to equip, for adults to equip them and empower them to address the many teachable moments that occur when accessing the internet. The words groomer and pedophile are being casually tossed around lately. Mr. DeVivo teaches parents and staff how to protect their children from actual groomers and pedophiles. CCA and CCPS are bringing Mr. DeVivo and the innocent stolen back to our communities. So far, three schools, West Middle, Spring Garden, and Linton Springs, have booked dates. More are doing so, they're in the process of finding dates. Schools are working with their PTAs to bring this valuable program to their school community. If a community is interested in having Mr. DeVivo come to your school community, please let your administration or your PTA know. They can then contact me for more information. This program is free for everybody, free for the schools, free for us, free for people who come, but it is meant for each school community. Mr. DeVivo likes to meet with small groups rather than really large groups. For instance, West Middle will have theirs coming up next week, I believe, September twentieth, but that is for the West Middle community, so you will hear from your school communities or ask about it. On a completely unrelated note to that, CCA members would like to thank the board and let them know how appreciative they are of the new religious leave ratified in our last contract. As with anything new, CCPS, HR, and CCA are working out the details as we, as we learn this, but members have expressed gratitude for allowing them to observe their religious holidays. For example, we have two coming up very soon, Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. So I wanted to express how grateful we are for that, that we negotiated that. I would like to thank CASE Leadership, right back here, Cindy and Sherry, for joining us at the Carroll County Out of Darkness Walk to Prevent Suicide. So CCA and CASE walked together, a wonderful community event. CCPS is in the second week of school, it seems like much longer. The educators are establishing their routines and helping our students acclimate to the school environment. Most important of all, they are educating our students. Some students will learn about the life cycle of the monarch butterfly. Some students will attend outdoor schools, spending their first nights away from home and getting very muddy. Some students learning calculus right now are wishing that they had listened to me when I said to memorize the values of the trig functions and the identities. Let all of us focus on learning and the continuity of learning. Carroll County has great students and great educators, and we all need to remember, when you support educators, you support students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Frazier. My name is Cindy Porter, and I am the President of the Carroll Association of School Employees, also known as CASE, proudly representing the assistants, LPNs, and clerical bargaining unit members in Carroll County Public Schools. The beginning of the school year is an exciting and hectic time of year for students, their families, and school staff. The members of our CASE bargaining unit have already been hard at work, diligently getting to know students, and forming those connections that will be so very important as the school year continues. Those connections happen in offices, classrooms, including special area classrooms, hallways, cafeterias, and in one-on-one situations, in nooks and corners throughout our school buildings across the county. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our ESPs, the Education Support Professionals of CCPS, for their dedication to the students of Carroll County, for their flexibility, and for doing what it takes as we all try to find that rhythm and settle into the school year ahead. Connections are also already being forged in our communities. As Ms. Jordan announced, we walked with CCEA this past Saturday in the Out of Darkness Walk for Suicide Prevention at Crim Gold Park in Woodbine. While I have much to be proud of already this year as President of these dedication, dedicated education support professionals, I was honored and privileged to have the opportunity on August thirtieth, along with MSEA President Cheryl Boast, former CASE Uniserve and current MSEA ESP organizing specialist Sean McIlloch, and current CASE Uniserve Ryan Genovese, to surprise Sherry Main, Security Assistant at Century High School, who is here with me this evening, to let her know that she has been selected as the Maryland State Education Association Support Professional of the Year at a staff meeting that first week back at school. I've known Sherry for about twenty years now, and can tell you that I'm not only honored to call her a colleague, but more importantly, a great educator and friend. When meeting Sherry, it becomes quickly evident that she cares greatly about students, their families, and her fellow staff members. She possesses all of the qualities you seek out in a support professional, leading with her student-centered heart. As the MSEA ESP of the Year, Sherry will also represent Maryland in the National Education Association ESP of the Year competition next spring. Sherry's selection speaks to the quality of education support professionals working in CCPS schools each and every day. She is so very deserving of this honor, and I would like to close my remarks by saying, congratulations, Sherry. We're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other employee groups? Then we'll move on to board member activities and correspondence. Dr. Dorsey, you want to start us?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kyler. Hopefully, everyone has had a wonderful start to the school year. From what I have seen and heard, it's been great, so many thanks to all who have made it happen. On August twenty-third, I attended an Open Meetings Act. It was one of MAB's Board Service Academy sessions that they had, along with several other members here from the county who participated in that. On the twenty-sixth of August, I toured the construction site of the new East Middle, and, boy, we have so much to be proud of and so much to look forward to. It's going to be wonderful when we can have our students and staff move into that facility. That same day, I also attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new all-inclusive playground at Hampstead Elementary School. And again, that was a wonderful, it was a wonderful day and a wonderful event as well. And again, all-inclusive, that means every student, no matter what situation they might find themselves in, they will be able to enjoy that new playground. So congratulations to that community, and thanks to all the ones who, who made that possible. On the thirty-first, we had our work sessions with the School Security and the Southern Area Redistricting Committee. On September one, I was so excited to attend the kindergarten orientation and new student orientation and open house at William Winchester Elementary School. So I certainly thank Principal Erin Sikorski for the invitation, and many thanks and kudos to all of the staff members and families and students from William Winchester, because they really kicked off a wonderful start to their year. On the seventh of September, I had the opportunity, as we mentioned earlier, to participate in the walkthrough of Freedom Elementary School, and then to attend our board work session later. On the twelfth of September, I wrote down that I had a tour of Sykesville Middle School, but it was more like a walkthrough for me. That's a former school of mine. I attended Sykesville years ago, so it's just interesting to see how it is now a middle school and functions very well in that capacity. So it was good to sort of get back home to Sykesville and to be a part of walking through that middle school. And finally, on this morning, I attended our MAB Board of Directors meeting, and as a part of that meeting, we had President Crawford and Vice President Getty, members of the Maryland State Department, the State Board of Education, in attendance. We just had some time with them today, responding to questions. It was more like an open conversation that our group was able to have with them. So that was a worthwhile activity for this morning. And let me just say that before our next meeting, I know that our MAB annual conference is coming up, so again, I would like to encourage my fellow board members to try to spend some time with us at MAB this year, October sixth through eighth. And again, just about every topic that was brought up at our directors' meeting this morning is somehow going to be played out at the, at the conference this year. So it's going to be very pertinent. So it's going to be very pertinent, timely topics that will be there, that will be a part of that conference. So so far, I think we have 130 people already registered to attend, and it would be great if we had a little team from Carroll County, from this board, attending as well. So thanks very much.
Good evening, everyone. I've had a lot of correspondence, a lot of phone calls, and from parents and teachers saying, "Let's get back to normalcy." Well, I started, I attended school in first grade in 1956, right there where they sell ball gowns now there as you go over to the hospital or to the fair. But I've seen a lot of changes. I've seen the worst and the best in all those years. But I'm going to have to say it's the Internet. Yes, it is a great educational tool, but it is destroying our students and our teachers and the way we behave and act. It's instant gratification, negativity, PIA requests, Instagram, Facebook, computer warriors sitting behind a computer saying whatever they want to say. It would be really nice if people would talk to one another. Parents versus parents. And I can see out that door and that window. And it was a circus, and parents, you could tell that parents were arguing amongst themselves, grabbing blue cards out of their hands, throwing them away. And that is not appropriate, waiting for citizen participation. Yes, we do need to make some changes, like everyone, and I agree with that. But we need parents to be partners. We need parents to set good examples. We need to work together. And I know there's been a lot of negativity, but we need to really start working on this. It's been a really divisive time. You're either on one side or the other, and we used to be able to agree to disagree or disagree to agree. That's gone. So it would be so nice if we could really get back to work. We need, as a public school system, to get back to reading, writing, and arithmetic when I was in school. We need to get back to our academics. And I'm just asking everybody, you know, to help us out, be positive, and to get back to what we really are here for, to educate our students, not have as many distractions. I want to see where we are on the grade-three reading level. I want to see where we are in math. I want to see our weaknesses. I want to see what we need to help our students out to achieve, to be college and career-ready. So I've heard a lot of that within the last couple months, and I have been quiet, but enough's enough. And Tom, I will tell you, if North Carroll would open up tomorrow, I would be the first one there, because I still love that school, whether it was crowded or overcrowded. And one time, it had 1,800. When I left, it was 1,400, and that was probably one of the saddest days of my life besides my husband being killed on my farm. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to run through and probably not do a lot of dates, but just things that's happened since the last meeting. One, unrelated to the school system, but since Tom and Marcia brought it up, I can too. Mrs. Herbert was trying to call me one day, three weeks ago, and I answered quick and said, "I can't talk right now. I'm standing in the front office of North Carroll High School." I won't repeat what she said, but we ended our phone call.
Yes, you made me mad. I love that school.
Since the last meeting, we had new teacher orientation. Carroll County Public Schools, the superintendent, staff, and myself got to meet Mr. Crawford and Ms. Getty, and it was a very, I think, positive discussion. I've seen comments from them since the meeting talking about, and I'm glad to see they met you guys, they are truly trying to get out and about and see the different school systems. Mr. Crawford said he was never on a local board. So he wants to meet people and talk to them about it, and I think it was a positive conversation. We've had some Board of Ed training, workshops, first day of school. I want to mention a couple other things that are school-related but somewhat personal. I got to meet Timmy Greenwood's family. He was a coach and a teacher in Carroll County Public Schools and passed prematurely. And I got to meet them and talk about the scholarships they give in his name, and they do some charity football games in his name. And that's just, like Mrs. Herbert was saying, we can all get along occasionally, and there's sometimes just great things that make us want to do that. I always start this way, I shouldn't probably, but I'm old. But we had a breakfast with 10 wrestlers from my high school team and our high school coach, Donald Rec, who coached North Carroll, became an assistant principal there, and then retired as the principal at East Middle. So it's just so great. He had seen some people a couple weeks before, and prior to COVID, we did a breakfast. And he told my wife, he goes, "What's wrong? You guys aren't out yet? I haven't had any breakfast." So we did that, and it's just great to see. It's so rewarding to see friends from high school and talk about what we're doing now. And then we did do our work sessions. We did do tours of Sykesville Middle and Freedom to try to make our plans for tonight's meeting. And then we did a tour of East Middle, like Dr. Dorsey mentioned, and it was great. And construction was going on. We were somewhat limited, but we still got, they bent for us a little bit. And then we were at Hampstead Elementary for their playground, and I just want to compliment that school and that community for reaching out and getting that done. Our delegates in Annapolis got a grant for it. A couple companies really reached in their pockets and contributed to it, and it's a beautiful playground, and it took the community to make it happen, and it's great. Ms. Batavia?
So yeah, lots been going on. Been very busy since the last meeting we had. Visited the state fair. They had that for three weekends this time instead of two long weeks, so it ended up breaking it up into three different weekends. So that was really good for students all over the state that potentially, you know, their schools started before Labor Day. But I do want to congratulate all of the CCPS students that participated in the state fair. It was phenomenal, and it's an extremely limited number of animals that go to the livestock auction. I did attend also, as well as the East Middle tour and the ribbon-cutting of the Hampstead Playground. And again, as Dr. Dorsey said, it is an incredible, inclusive playground for all students of all needs. I was so happy to see all the different types of students, no matter what their needs were, were able to use that playground. So it's incredible. And I'm excited that we got to be there to witness that. Of course, we all celebrated the first day of school. Lots of nerves, lots of excitement, and I'm glad things are going smoothly, so far so good, knock on wood. We participated in a Zoom meeting for training. I attended the LAC meeting, which is a board-appointed committee, where it's different community members, different groups from the community that come in. And a lot of it was discussion regarding the Career and Tech Center, different organizations that are partnering with the school system to offer things for students, like the Robotics Club. So there's a lot going on, there's a lot of excitement. And pretty soon, I think we're going to be hearing stuff about the Career and Technology Center and some new programming that's coming down the pipeline. So it's extremely exciting with the way technology is always changing, that we're going to have something potentially for our students. We toured the Freedom Elementary School in Sykesville Middle. And on Friday, of course, since I am a maverick for Manchester Valley, I stopped by the Man Valley Stampede, which was amazing. Their tradition is they bring in the horses that, the students that are involved in FFA. So it is really cool to see the different, you know, the horses come in with the students, and then you have the runners coming across the finish lines, and of course, then you have the football game and Man Valley won. So it was fantastic. I hope everyone continues to have a great week. We've got a lot coming up. I'm going to try to make it to Mabe. Unfortunately, my husband's going away, and I'm the only one left behind. So someone's got to put the eight-year-old on the bus. So I'm going to attempt to make it as much as I can. But I am looking forward to what we have continually to going on, getting back to reading, writing, and math for our kids and making sure that they can be successful.
Thanks. Well, I'll try to go pretty quickly, because I think everybody hit most of the things that we did this past month already. But just wanted to make a couple of special shout-outs, and one being the redistricting work sessions that we did this past month. So the fact that we did two of them, we had several community members. The SARC Committee was present at both of those work sessions, and I had the opportunity to speak with them afterwards. And it was really a fantastic, dedicated group trying to problem-solve in the county with a significant concern that we have. So I want to thank them again for their efforts and for being willing to be present and answer questions and give us their opinions about things. And also Commissioner Rothstein, who was here. I just thought those were really good discussions that we had, and I think it really does kind of show how the community is trying to work together on these issues. And the security session as well. I think that was a great session and want to thank the folks who put that on. And I think there was some really good information in that packet that we didn't get a chance to. There was so much going on that we didn't get a chance to review all of it, but I'm excited to see that come back as part of the strategic plan discussion that we'll be having in a couple of weeks. The tours of Freedom and Sykesville, I think, were very informative, even though I've been in, well, I'd never been in Sykesville Middle. I think I'd been in all other middle schools around the county, but that was the one that I had never been in before, so it was very helpful to see. And I've been in Freedom multiple times, but never really seeing it from that perspective of kind of talking about the needs of the school and the needs of the community and how the space issues were significant. So that was very helpful. It's been a very busy month for schools starting up. I have two high schoolers this year, and it was very exciting to see a normal start to the school year. And Ms. McCabe, I want to commend you on the procedures that were followed this year, you know, getting back all the syllabi, the permission forms. It followed a very reasonable pattern with the syllabus. Like, we're setting the expectations for our kids and basically saying, "This is going to be a new year, and this is how things are going to be graded, and this is what you're going to learn." And it was just really great to see that structure. And I think the kids are excited about it and will thrive in that environment. So very excited about that. There have been a lot of emails this month as well on a lot of different topics. Some of the topics we'll be talking about tonight, potentially taking some votes on, but just wanted to assure folks that we do read all of those emails, and we want you to keep them coming. That's how we understand what the concerns are of the community and where we can maybe make some tweaks to things in order to make things consistent and more palatable for everyone across the county. We really are trying to find that feasible solution that works for everybody. You're never going to make everybody happy, but there are always some tweaks that you can make that make things better. And so we really appreciate that commentary, especially from the folks who got up to talk about citizen participation earlier tonight. I think that we've seen a lot of those topics in the emails, and we appreciate them. And I think there's probably going to be some significant discussion about that tonight. So again, please keep the emails coming. And then the one last thing I wanted to say was about the states not releasing the data yet for math and English results. It seems to be a significant delay in those results, and I would say we really need those results to be able to use them as part of our strategic planning exercise, understand where our students are achieving and where they're not achieving, and try to make those changes as part of our strategic plans. So I just want to say I'm disappointed that those results aren't going to be released until potentially the January timeframe. And I think that maybe we should try to, as a board, say, you know, try to understand or maybe reach out to the state and say, "This is a significant issue, and we need those results to see where our students are today and make sure that we get the recovery learning that they need." So I'm not sure exactly the best way to handle that, but just want to say that I, as a board member, would like to promote and reach out to the state to try to get those results released quicker.
So many of my correspondence shadowed my fellow board members with the redistricting work sessions as well as the school security work sessions and the tour of Freedom, all very informative and really helps freshen and visualize what exactly we're working with right now and so that we can make the best decision. In addition, I have also been able to work with the new student orientation at Century High School. I was able to present on all the incredible opportunities student government presents, which was really great to see new faces really excited to be involved in this as there's many facets of student government that can be really beneficial for the individual and for the community. Additionally, I also got to tour Century High School with new freshmen, and it was a pleasure just to show around the place I love. And lastly, yesterday, in addition to other conversations, I've been able to have discussions and hold meetings with students, so I'm directly hearing what their thoughts are regarding redistricting, regarding items on today's agenda, so that I'm really trying to build those connections. So students, please keep continuing to reach out to me. Please use my social media, my website, every facet I have. Please try and reach out to me. I'd love to hear more voices, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
I'd like to begin this evening by thanking everyone who worked so hard to ensure that our schools and classrooms were ready for the return of our students last Tuesday. Despite the rainy weather, and it was rainy, we had a great first day. I had the pleasure of visiting a few of our schools that day to welcome our students, and everyone is looking forward to an exciting new year. As you visit our schools and offices, you may notice our new posters that look like this, highlighting the traits of kindness, respect, and unity. We will be emphasizing the importance of these qualities with our students throughout the year. We also will be conducting a positive social media campaign that features students exhibiting kindness, respect, and unity. Next, I would like to congratulate Sarah Snook, an eighth-grade science teacher at North Carroll Middle School. Sarah has received the Outstanding Earth Science Teacher Award for the state of Maryland. The National Association of Geoscience Teachers presents this award to teachers who have made exceptional contributions to stimulating interest in the earth sciences. Sarah was recognized for her inclusive practices for students with disabilities. And finally, I would like to take a moment to congratulate Sheri Haley-Maine. As Ms. Porter mentioned in her comments, Sheri, a security assistant at Century High School, has been selected as the Educational Support Professional of the Year by the Maryland State Education Association. Sheri does an outstanding job at Century, and we are very proud to have her represent all of our education support professionals and our school system at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no presentations on the agenda tonight, so we're into reports. The first report is the school construction report. Mrs. McCabe?
This is the monthly construction report, which provides updates on our two major projects, Career and Tech, and East Middle, and details some smaller projects we have in various stages. This month's report provides updates on the budget status for both Career and Tech and East Middle. If you recall, at the time of award of bid for each project, we recognized that the market was shifting and inflation and lead times were becoming factors. For each project, we made some adjustments to reduce certain budget line items and noted that we would monitor budgeting as the projects were underway and update the board as appropriate. In this case, in the case of the Career and Tech project, the board approved the project with certain ad alternates, with the understanding that we had avenues to make adjustments for furniture and equipment and contingency costs if needed. We intend to bring a capital budget transfer to the board at the October meeting to adjust the project budget in these two areas. At this point in construction, the East Middle project is on track to be completed on time, and we project the furniture and equipment budget will be sufficient. Mr. Marx is here for any questions.
Hi there, dear. How are you? Glad you're back. I have, I think, three questions, maybe two. First of all, I need to thank Karen Sarno, because she did lunches today at the Career and Tech because both ovens in the cafeteria did not work. So I need to know, I'm curious, number one, do you call Gilbane? Do you call the manufacturer? How do we get this fixed and like ASAP, as soon as possible?
They are. They have staff working on them right now.
Okay.
We first go to the contractors that installed them.
Okay.
And then sometimes it's, we figure out who's responsible. Is it electrical feed from downstairs, from the main gear, or is it actual equipment related? So they've been assessing it. I'll get an update tomorrow morning, but we are going to fix this as fast as possible.
Yes. And I need to thank her because we did need to get, they needed to eat today. And I'm sure we've all had bologna sandwiches before. I don't know what they had, but anyway, you know, or a salad, so.
And this is very common.
And things happen. I do understand that.
And it's especially how, you know, at a start of any new building, you're going to have issues like this pop up. You know, we had air conditioning issues that we resolved in there today, this afternoon. So, you know, they'll have an air-conditioned cafeteria tomorrow. So things like that happen.
Yeah, because I was, I went in the other day to visit. You probably heard. I just wanted to take a peek because I missed the tour because I was a grandmother and had to pick up kids from, in the rain. So anyway, now, when you're buying, like, the washers for the culinary arts, I did hear complaint about that, that that washing machine's not big enough and doesn't do the oil correctly, and that's how the other dryer caught on fire. So now, can we get rid of that one and then replace it? Is that what we're going to do?
Yeah, we're looking into modifying that. And that is a degreaser. It's an add-on to it, and unfortunately wasn't added to that model. So we're looking into that. We'll accommodate that. And this happens, especially with specialty programs like this, all over that building, even from automotive upstairs to all the other programs. We've told the instructors, you know, that we will correct any of those problems. It's no problem.
Okay, because I think there, you know, some people are putting the blame where it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
And I just, you know, I just want to let people know that it's going to be fixed.
Yes.
And, you know, just work with us, them, the contractors, that we will get this stuff done.
Absolutely.
Now, will you be able to then move money over for the rest of the equipment and furniture's needs? Because I know we've spent
Yes.
almost all of it.
Yes. We complete that transaction Ms. McCabe talked about for next month. It will take care of us. Obviously, things can happen in the next two years as we're buying the rest of the phases, as we're doing renovations now. We're in the school. We run into issues, and sometimes people change their mind on equipment as we go through a project. But we feel that that 1.1 million dollars that she mentioned for furniture and equipment will take care of us, yes.
Okay, because East Middle has 2-point something. That's
They used to. They used, that was the original FNE budget. We cut that by a million dollars.
Okay.
But we were fine.
I know it's different to do a elementary school or a middle school versus a Career and Tech, where you need, like, big washing machines or big ovens or
Printing presses.
Yes, that stuff. So anyway, it's absolutely, I only did the first floor. I didn't want to bother everybody. I just went in and said hi, and I went and stopped in where the teachers were eating. But it's absolutely gorgeous, and it looks like a business, and it looks like it's technical. And I can't wait to see the rest of it. But that was my main concern because I know we're going to need to buy a lot of other furniture and equipment for that school, which is going to be a lot more expensive than another. So, okay.
You're correct. We'll keep that.
All right. Well, okay. Thank you, Karen, again. And I'm normally going to ask all those questions. I know Donna's got it. I'm not going to.
Well, Mr. Marx knows I don't lose the opportunity, right?
It's fine.
Thanks. I just was hoping you could give a little bit more description around the, so the construction escalation. So the comment in here is the construction escalation was locked in with the contract in 2020, which we know, right? But change orders are open to current material costs, so contingencies have suffered.
Yes.
So have we had a significant amount of change orders?
Well, yes and no. I mean, it depends. We're in a very typical range of change orders that we would experience on a project. However, this one, since it's an occupied-phase reno, you know, we are inside of the school right now. So we encounter issues that you wouldn't have in a greenfield site that are surprises. So we have our range of surprises. We're not, I wouldn't say that we're, that it's way over top. I mean, it's usual for a project to have anywhere around 3% of a total project cost in change orders. We're not over that. But we're just concerned. We have to keep things flowing. We have to make sure that we have the comfort level as we go through the project, and especially with a four-year project like this. This is the most complicated project we've ever done. This is the toughest project, you know, having students in there, you know, while we're building the insides of the school, making it safe, appeasing everybody, egress, safety, you name it, and we're doing it. But, you know, sometimes you have to modify things, but we're doing okay.
Well, I think where we had settled on the final budget for the Career and Tech project was about 69 million.
Yes.
And so how much of that is for contingencies and change orders? I'm trying to remember.
We started with, I believe it was around $800,000.
Okay, that was really the only amount that was in the, so are we basically, we've blown through that, or we still have a little bit left?
We have a little bit left, very little in there.
Okay. And do you think it's enough to get us through the end of the project? Because there's still quite a bit more to go.
No, that's why that additional $800,000 in next month will help us get through the rest of the project. Oh, yeah, explains there. So, you know, sometimes you can maneuver out of other categories where you're saving, and we've certainly done that, energy-related things, some of our other, you know, general conditions parts that we've had. But we're at the point where we need that extra $800,000 in our contingency.
Since nobody else cares about site work, and we would notice Liberty and Shiloh, they were pretty extensive paving projects, but with the other stuff going on, they seem almost insignificant. They came in on time and on money?
Yes, they did, absolutely. And the escalation part of that, which you've asked before about, we handled that, and I think in a very fair way with the contractors, from, we told them we would pay for an escalation on the spot price of oil from the bid date to contract award when you awarded in June. And it gained 10% between those two timeframes, and we're giving them, you know, change orders to accommodate for that.
I did, I did visit Shiloh last Friday for a 9/11 thing, and that is a really nice, clean, improved parking lot. It is really, really, really nice.
Thank you.
I was just going to say thank you because I'm so happy to see everything that's going along, you know, happening with East Middle, how, what's going on with Career and Tech is just every time I drive by, it's always something else is done, and the excitement just builds up, like, oh, it's coming. It's almost finished. We're getting there. So I just want to thank you for everything that you have done.
We appreciate it. Sometimes we're on a thankless job, so we appreciate that.
Our next report is the Report on Curriculum Guide Proposed Revisions. Mrs. McCabe?
Typically, each year, we bring to the board proposed revisions to curriculum guides, which details necessary revisions and pilots for the coming year. Mr. Shockney and Mr. Wernick are available for any questions.
I have a lot of questions. Okay, so I think we'll probably have to take some turns here, right? Yeah, okay. I guess the first one is, so it says that each curriculum is provided in digital format and available for review. Could we get an understanding of where that is, and can we get like a link to that so that we could go?
Absolutely. It's actually on our website. So if you go into our current website of our online curriculum, everything that we have done is posted in there.
Okay, gotcha.
And it's way more friendly than it used to be. It's pretty
Absolutely, absolutely.
I can almost find it.
These revisions, I'm not sure, due to COVID or other unexplained, may not have been in previous years. We used to do this each year, just to provide some revisions and where we're thinking and where we're going. And so I know that this year is one of, you know, first times in several years that this has been actually provided for discussion.
Okay. And the 100,000 estimated cost, is that just for the curriculum writers?
That's correct. That's just curriculum writing. And again, you know, it's throughout the summer. Sometimes we revise a little bit at the beginning of the school year based on needs or what teachers may see as they're using the materials. So again, that's why we put estimate. It's usually anywhere between 90 and like, you know, 105,000 dollars.
And I did want to make a couple of comments about, we know that the health education, there's been a lot of changes to the health education, and there's a lot of things that are potentially going to be written in the near future and piloted this coming year. But I just wanted to make a comment that we know that, I've actually been, I've had a lot of parents reaching out, the first week of school, as permission forms were coming out, you know, trying to understand about the family life curriculum. And, you know, well, we're not sure whether things have changed. Should I be opting my kid in? Should I be opting my kid out? Like, I'm not quite understanding. And so I just wanted to make it very clear to community members that nothing has changed this year as part of the family life curriculum. So it's going to be the same curriculum that was in last year and prior years. It's in, it's over the coming two years that things will be, start to be looked at. The new curriculum will be written and implemented next year for high school and middle schoolers.
Correct.
And two years from now for elementary schools.
Correct. And all those revisions, all the curriculum for family life, you know, will be presented at the Family Life Advisory Committee as we continue to review that. And again, nothing has changed this year. Next year, it would be middle school, Health One and Health Two, and the high school. And then the following year, so two years out, would be elementary.
Okay, okay, great. Well, I have a lot more, but I'll give everybody else a chance to.
Well, I was just going to bring up the ones related to health as well, but I think you've touched on those. And again, it was interesting to see the pre-K curriculum for health. So I'm curious to go on to see what that actually looks like for our little pre-K students. And again, the whole health curriculum, basically, was part of the topics that we discussed at our Mabe Directors Meeting this morning. And again, it sounds like, again, the whole process that was used to come up with the health curriculum, you know, we have our folks standing by that whole process because they indicate certainly was a huge collection of people over a long period of time, and the national health standards were really being used to formulate our curriculum. And it was stressed that a lot of what we have are guidelines. And again, as we know, you know, we were basically told to sort of figure it out from there, as far as making sure that we have the curriculum that we want in place for our students. And we know that there are the opt-out, you know, for the family sections. So again, I think it's just going to be a process that we'll continue to keep our eyes on. And again, we know that we want what's best for our students because we do want them, you know, to be well-rounded and to have the information that they need.
Absolutely. And one change, when you look at the health framework from the Maryland State Department of Education, is that it used to say up to fourth grade and beyond could opt out. At this point, any student in any grade, if a parent chose to, they would be able to opt out of that, of that family life portion.
I had a couple of questions regarding Health One, Health Two, and Health Three regarding the life-saving measures. I had noticed that everything from Health Two regarding CPR, AED, first aid training certification, and naloxone, all that had been moved down to Health Three. And I have some concerns regarding that because we live in a society right now where life-saving skills is a skill. It is something that, it's no different than breathing or eating, as far as I'm concerned. And I think our students having those skills is extremely beneficial, and Health Three is not required. So I would, so I was just kind of wondering, like, why all that's been moved? Is it a money situation? Did we look at, you know, you know, I'd be willing to even like, hey, you know, I don't care. I think those things are so important, you know, figure out the funding. But I think we need, that's what I want to find out about.
Absolutely. And that was actually discussed last year. It is a funding concern that because every student takes Health One and Health Two, ninth and 10th grade, that, you know, every student would then, there would be a cost associated with them being certified in that. And so it comes down to a health concern, and so it was moved to Health Three, you know, to provide that to students who would continue to go on a little further in their health curriculum. And so that's why that change was made.
Mr. Wernick, can I, and this is a topic that we had actually heard about at the CNI Committee at the end of last year. Ms. Pataglia and I were there, and we had asked some questions about, okay, we know it might be a money situation, right, where, but I think it's for the actual certification piece. So previously, it was that these things were in Health Two, but not everybody took Health Two, right? But now, with these classes moving forward, everyone will be taking Health Two. Everyone is required to take Health Two, but not everyone will be taking Health Three, which is kind of why those pieces were pulled out and moved over. But the way we understood it was that it's like $10 per kid in order to get the certification. So they're teaching the skills, but then it's actually, so they could still teach the skills in Health Two to all the kids, but it's the actual getting the card, like the certification for each of the students. And so I'd like to kind of understand what the cost is associated with that, if that's something that we're willing to try to find a way to fund as a Board of Education, because it truly is a skill. It's an important skill that I think would be good for all the kids to have in Health Two. But if it's just that cost, like, how much is the cost? And then secondly, is it possible to maybe do, where like you teach the skills in Health Two, but then you would actually maybe get the certification, like the piece of paper, if you took Health Three? So at least you have the skills, maybe not the piece of paper certification as maybe like a bridge the gap kind of thing, if it is more money than we think we can fund. Just trying to understand that a little bit better.
We can definitely cost that out to see what the cost would be. I think we also would need to look at the technical implications, because I'm certain our teachers are also certified instructors. And with that, you know, could you teach a course but not to the certification standard? Or we'd have to look into it, but we most definitely can do that, and we most definitely can cost it out.
Okay. Because I think Ms. Pataglia and I are both very interested. I'm not sure about the rest of the board, but I think I'd like to understand if we could cost that out, just to see what we're talking about, because I think it's a very important life skill.
And I was thinking, I mean, this is the age, you know, the freshman sophomore year where they start doing babysitting jobs, you know, they're having more responsibility where they're watching younger siblings. And a lot of times, those life-saving skills, you know, that helps them, you know, earn some money. So I think, you know, that's another important aspect of it, because not every parent can afford to have their child go over to community college, take the, you know, CPR class and the first aid class and stop the bleed. So I think those things particularly, I mean, especially, you know, going out into the real world, those things are so important, particularly, you know, like we've seen, you know, with a student recently, the AED, CPR, naloxone, you know, those things are so important. And I did reach out to our health department to see if they had any numbers right now as to how many students have saved lives regarding naloxone. Because I think that's something important to see, too. Like, we see in the county, like, how many deaths we have, but how many lives have been saved because of naloxone? I mean, that's a huge significant difference than it was five, 10 years ago. I mean, those numbers were really bad. So I just want to make sure that we are, you know, looking at this. I mean, even if we have to take one of those things and move into Health One, with if you take naloxone and move it to Health One, that, I mean, give it some wiggle room? I don't know. But yeah, I'd like to still see that.
Absolutely. For some clarification, would you like to see the CPR and the AED is really what costs? That's, you know, because there needs to be a certified instructor as well as that's the card they would receive. Would you like to see that in Health One, Health Two, or both?
I think
Because students in Health One will eventually take Health Two.
Right.
And so would you like to move it and see it in Health Two, since that would encompass all students roughly in the 10th grade?
I think definitely CPR and Health Two. Definitely CPR, you know, first aid.
AED and
Yeah, all that.
Yeah, I think Health Two, since all students are now required to take Health Two, I think that would be
Yeah.
probably the best timing.
Right. And always, you know, reaching out to our fire departments, you know, our local EMS. I mean, a lot of times, they want to help, but they're never asked, you know, to come in and help, you know, with the training, even if it's, you know, to go get recertified or just some type of way, just make sure we reach out to them, too.
Absolutely. We would have to ensure that it's, they're certified because they're teaching students, so that they're certified to be able to teach students on those methods, as well as provide that type of certification and sign off on the instructors.
But each of our health teachers are certified CPR training, correct? Okay, okay. So there's not an additional cost in
No, but it would be the cost of ensuring that we have the cards and that they're actually, that they stay that they stay certified in this.
Okay.
Mrs. Herbert?
Are we finished with Health yet?
Well.
Okay, now, anything about Health?
Well, I was just going to say, in reference to that, now, you made the revisions this summer, right? So teachers are already planning out their year? So is that going to have an effect?
It's early in the year, so we can look at it and make those adjustments. You know, once we, you know, I'll come back next at the October board meeting with more information on the cost and all. And so as soon as we, you know, the board decides, then we will put that into place and make those changes. It will take a little bit of time, but we'll do our best, you know, as soon as we can, to put that into our curriculum.
Keep in mind also, these are our proposed revisions and pilots over the course of this year is what we're listing here. Later, you're going to see what we did last year and what we're looking to make permanent. So this is a great opportunity for us to trial, see, you know, make sure also with the revised framework that we still have time to get everything in. But these are all possible options that we'll definitely explore.
I'm happy to hear that. I mean, I just, sorry, I mean, being naloxone trained to me is so important to our kids, you know, along with CPR and AEDs and, you know, I mean, a life is priceless. So whatever the next expense may be, I think, I don't think the board would argue anything.
Ms. Herbert?
We still on Health or?
Yeah, I want to make sure we're finished Health first.
Do you mind if I add a point really quick?
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Could we also look into potentially with Health One, training students on how to use stop the bleed kits, because we are really expanding that with our safety aspect, safety and security. I think it'd be helpful for students to know exactly what those are, how to use them in all cases.
I will look, yes, and how it aligns within the curriculum, because each curriculum, again, has the standard. So I will, I'll see how that aligns into Health.
All right, thank you.
Done Health.
I'm done with Health.
Go ahead, Ms. Herbert.
I'm not. I just thought of something. I taught Health. I think if we have things set already in action for the first nine weeks, I think it'll be very difficult to change that. I'm just being honest in the way, you know, we have things set up. So I just wanted to bring that out. Yeah, I'm just being honest. There's no way that they'll be able to teach their curriculum and add all that to it. And I know that's all very, very, very important, but I'm just telling the truth.
I think at this point, we're just an exploratory. We'll take a look at things, but what we've, the wheels are in motion with our curriculum now is going to continue. We'll work with our writers, with our staff, see what's feasible, and then we can look at the longer range plan for revision. And this may mean we bring something to you next year that we want to look and change. But these, you know, the suggestions I gave are great ones, but I'll be clear, that's not something we're going to look to change right now. We're going to look into it, get a little more info, put it together, see what works, and then we'll go from there.
Right, because these are things that are supposed to be piloted during this school year, right? So we can.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. There's no way.
Correct. And the curriculum's written, you know, for this school year. So, right. And that's why I said, as soon as, once we receive the cost and then bring it back, as soon as we would be able to then write the lessons, put it back, you know, put it in, that's when we would.
Because you don't teach CPR in a day, you know. So I do know that. So, okay, now.
But we wouldn't need to write the, those lessons, they already exist, because they were previously taught in Health Two, but it's fitting into.
What are you going to take out that, but that is, that's all very important.
It's the whole planning piece, you know.
Right, absolutely.
Where it's ready to fit in.
Okay, now, beside Ms. Sharon Lilly, it says Advanced Academics. Now, is it Advanced Academics or is it Gifted and Talented, and there's no Advanced Academics in Comar? So what are we doing here? That's my question. And I've always asked that, and I will continue to ask that, because if it's Gifted and Talented, it's not Advanced Academics, because it's not the same criteria.
So at the elementary and middle school, it's really Gifted and Talented programs. As you get into the high school, though, there is no true Gifted and Talented program. It's more Advanced Academics, because students are taking more advanced courses.
Because people need to know that, because Ms. Vigney, I've always been on this Gifted and Talented, where is it, what it's doing and all this. But it always makes me mad when you see Advanced Academics, and then that really confuses people as time goes on. So people need to know that it's Gifted and Talented in the elementary and middle, and now that we've got Advanced Academics in high school, that would be a clarification that we all need to know. And I did ask Ms. McCabe if we could have a presentation or, I need to know, we need to know what's going on in there, because we have lost track of what is going on with Gifted and Talented due to two years of COVID. And we've been trying to get everybody to go to school, be, just try to get through school. That's all we were really trying to do, pretty much. So I want to know what's going on with Gifted and Talented, Advanced Academics, and where it's going. And are we, what do we need to fix or critique or whatever? So.
We can certainly put together a presentation for an upcoming board meeting on Gifted and Talented.
And just to kind of pile on that thought, I did have some questions about the Advanced Academics, because there is a fair bit of revision that's going on here, right? Like, so Ms. Lilly has put together a lot of, a lot of extensions, I guess, for various grades. And so just trying to understand, you know, at least for, you know, grades three, four, and five, is that more of a push-in approach rather than a pull-out approach that we're trying to institute around the county?
Absolutely. It's more of a push-in, curricular extension activities, as well as a co-teaching model. Because, you know, we find that students learn better in the classroom than being pulled out of their environment. So it'd be more of, and it also allows for additional students, maybe just not the Gifted and Talented students, but some students who may be advanced in certain areas to participate as well. So it's more of an integrated model with the regular teacher, so that they can reinforce those extensions in small group as well, a co-teaching in certain areas, as well as, at times, there may be a pushout, but we're really looking at more of a pushing, co-teaching model.
Okay. So along with Ms. Herbert's concerns, I would really like to kind of understand what we're doing at the elementary school level in order to make that switch from the pull-out to the push-in model. And, you know, have we, have we trained our, have we given our teachers the professional development that they need and enough planning time to make sure that that's working properly?
Well, and for the elementary, it looks like we're, again, still using the same curriculum, the science and the math and the ELA, but again, just looking at a way to really extend, provide some extensions in those curriculum areas. So that wouldn't be, oh, I wouldn't think that that would need as much training as, you know, doing something, you know, if you're beginning something brand new. And again, there are a number of ways that certainly we can have some extensions and, you know, just multi-level kinds of things for the students in those particular subject areas. So I agree, it would be good if we could hear and see, you know, what maybe some of those examples would be like of some of the extensions. But at the elementary level, it looks like, again, we're just basing it on the curriculum that they already are using, but just looking at some ways that we could extend. And in some cases, it's just, it's selected units that they've indicated that they would provide the extensions for.
And none of this is virtual anymore, right? We're all, okay.
And everything.
I just, well, I, look, I see. I was just, I was like, okay, I know you can do more numbers, but that's what we don't want. I don't, you know, I personally, we need to be with our children.
Yes.
Thank you.
All the Gifted and Talented teachers are in the classrooms, working with, again, co-teaching, maybe pulling out.
And we've got some really good, good people there working. I just want to know what's going on.
So that was actually one of the questions I had, was, there was discussion about having virtual foreign language classes, AP, or Advanced Academics. I was wondering, what is going on with that?
So for, are you talking about AP with foreign language? That's still, there's a, there are some students who are taking courses virtually, based on, you know, at the school, if there's not a teacher who teaches that foreign language, they are actually, you know, taking that virtually with a teacher within the county in a proposed, you know, schedule. So we are doing that. And we are continuing to look at that as well, you know, throughout our schools, to see where we can support, you know, that structure of learning.
Yeah, making sure that that's the consistency in it, because, you know, like, we've always heard, you know, Westminster had, you know, might have seven foreign languages, but Man Valley only has two. So we're trying to make those, get all that cleaned up a little bit, make it available for everybody, so everybody can get into it.
Exactly, as much as possible, exactly.
Any feedback on what you're hearing regarding it?
It's early in the school year, so, you know, the other piece that we're looking at is through dual enrollment, is also possibly offering some, you know, at the community college, so students can take those courses through a dual enrollment, you know, strategy to support their foreign language needs as well.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I'd wanted to follow up on that as well, trying to understand, like, so we did, we did actually implement it, and I think that we had approved one additional FTE for that purpose?
I am not sure of the FTE, but I do know that some of the teachers are teaching or extending, you know, a student virtually into their regular classroom. If they're teaching at one high school, a student may be virtual, you know, and extending directly into that classroom, you know, from their own high school.
Okay. And can you help me remember, was the one FTE that we approved, was that to extend the Spanish for native speakers program? I'm trying to remember whether it was in, but it's just world languages in general?
World languages, but I can't remember the specifics.
Okay, but we were able to staff that?
I cannot remember off the top of my head, but I'll check, and we'll find out and let you know.
Okay, great.
I'm glad to hear that, because I know, you know, Francis Scott Key was crying for help up there with most of all the foreign languages. And I know Man Vow was having a hard time with sign language. And I know one of my writers ended up driving over to Carroll Community. But that would be so much better if they could be at their school and go into somewhere where they could, you know, pick that up virtually, and it wouldn't have to be on the road. And that, you know, some things have come out with this pandemic, but I'm glad this is working, because we need to serve all our students with this type of thing.
So I just had one other question, just on this in general, there's a lot of mention of, you know, the state standards and the frameworks. I mean, I'm intimately familiar now with the health education framework, but not necessarily with, you know, science and social studies and things like that. Are those, are those frameworks also available on the same website with the actual curriculum writing?
They are. The other piece is that because of COVID and not being able to get together to curriculum write as we used to in person, and then, you know, provide, have teachers provide feedback, you see a lot more curriculum revisions this year, as well as when we look at what's proposed for next year, as well as what's being placed this year. So there's been, the last two years, we've done a lot of curriculum writing just to update our curriculum over the last three years. And so even though the standards may be very similar, haven't changed, it's taken three years ago, you know, and looking at it and saying, okay, we need to make sure that we're updating our curriculum, because it was not updated for, you know, at least two years because of COVID.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. And I assume we have no more public comments?
Anybody else?
So we're into action items. I need a motion for approval of appointments.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McCabe?
There's just one recommendation for appointment this evening. The Coordinator of Secondary Social Studies, Jennifer McDonald, will be going from instructional technology resource teacher to coordinator of secondary social studies.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, I need a motion for the approval of personnel action items.
So moved.
I'll second.
Ms. McCabe?
This is the standard monthly personnel action items list, which reflects our ongoing efforts to round out hiring for the current school year. We have had 31 new hires, two retiree rehire, two releases from contract, three broken contracts, two leaves of absence, one increase, and two decreases.
And many, many of these were back as early as, I think, mid-August. And I try to always say something, but it amazes me how many, they're not all Step One people. It's a lot of Step Four, Five, Seven. It's a lot of experienced teachers. Now, if they're new to CCPS, they still go through new teacher orientation, even if they're a five-year teacher.
Correct.
Okay, I notice one person is listed twice. So they had a leave of absence, they're on leave of absence, plus they have a decrease in their assignment.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tyler, I just had one, just in terms of the school year, when it actually started, you know, a week and a half ago. So we were, were we fully staffed or darn close to it?
We were, we were close to it. Mr. O'Neil, I don't know if you have exact numbers for us for the first day?
I don't. I don't know if Ernesto does. We're fully staffed in the sense that there's an adult in every classroom. There would be some classrooms that would have started with maybe a long-term substitute, and Mr. Diaz and his team would keep working with the content folks and the principals to fill those. Do you have a moving number of?
And if I remember, like, the Friday before school started, it was in single digits.
Yes, correct.
It is. And then, yeah. And we promoted people, creating some of those vacancies on our own. And then, you know, the start of the year, believe it or not, that there are still a few folks who might go on leave or different things. So it's very much a moving target.
Good evening. I don't really have a lot of additional information. That is very accurate. So we were in single digits. These schools either had a substitute or a teacher, right, or they're covering. And of course, you know, as the days progress, there are always changes happening. So at this point in time, we do have some vacancies in those critical shortage areas that we're looking to fill and so on, but they're either being covered by agencies or by substitutes or other adjustments.
And I don't remember a typical year, but in a typical year, you have movement all throughout the school year?
That is correct.
There's people leaving, people coming, people being promoted, and therefore vacancy. And so you don't like take two months off because you've got it done.
No. It's relatively less busy in the fall, which allows us opportunities to gather all of the data. And if you recall, the Pillar Three report from last year around October. So our year, in a sense, is sort of October 1 through September 30th, give or take, where then we're able to gather all those details in terms of the exact numbers hired for the year. And then those are due to state date requirements, but we're always hiring.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the award of bids.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McCabe?
There are four items on the monthly award of bids. The first is to furnish and install milk coolers at 22 schools. This is part of the Food Services Program Fund. The second is to contract commercial cafeteria equipment and furniture, again, from the Food Services Program Fund. And this is for purchase and installation of new serving lines at Pars Ridge and Piney Ridge Elementary Schools. The third is a sole source procurement for sources of strength. This award is for the Sources of Strength Program, and it's funded through a state grant program. And the fourth is a sole source procurement for GovRED Technology. This award is for a virtual reality training system for the Career and Tech Criminal Justice Program, and it is funded through the Perkins Grant.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I do have a couple.
Ms. Vigney?
Ms. McCabe, on the first one, for the 32, 32 milk coolers at 22 schools, I guess when I saw the 22 schools, I immediately thought, oh, it's all the elementary schools. But maybe it's not all the elementary schools. And I was just trying to understand why they would, why they all need to be replaced at exactly the same time.
Mr. O'Neil?
So, the aforementioned, Mrs. Sarno is sort of unique in that she's one of the few areas who runs her own program fund. She generates her revenue. But in the last couple of years, with the federal regulations relaxed, the revenue into that program has been, has been substantially more than prior years. Mrs. Sarno has long been working to kind of have enough of a fund to have a capital aspect to her program. So you've seen over time, different things come, but with the amount of money. So you've seen over time, different things come, but with the amount of money that has come in in the last couple of years with the waivers of the federal regulations, we actually have a plan in place with MSD to look at that fund and to be a little more aggressive with the capital program. So this is just about her replenishing, renewing, I mean, they're not really capital assets like we think of them otherwise, but sort of the hardware of her program on a, maybe a slightly more accelerated basis than normal.
Okay. So is it that, you know, all of the milk coolers are kind of on their last legs across all of the elementary schools?
Maybe not all on their last leg, but certainly, you know, age and life cycle where it's good to, if you have the opportunity to proactively address them before they are on their last leg on a given day, and you have to respond to it, you know, she's able to do that proactively. And Mr. Burke and others are able to look at that plan, and she does a pretty, actually a very sound job of managing that fund and looking at the assets overall.
Okay, yeah, she does an excellent job of managing that fund. I was just curious, you know, it's like, when you set yourself up for buying everything all at one shot, then it's all going to come due at the same time further on down the road, so just trying to make sure that we...
That's what I'm curious, if she has cycles of stuff she replaces, because like Mrs. Herbert was saying about Career in Tech, you, it's like a vehicle. You don't, you don't want to head to work with it on its last leg. You want to know when it needs to be replaced.
So she has an inventory of assets, just like you do a capital inventory. And similar to Mr. Prokop, she has a hopeful schedule, and you request funding. And unlike Mr. Prokop, who never meets that schedule, and it shifts, Mrs. Sarno is able to accelerate it a little bit here. That was a joke about Ray.
But it is, it is a lot at once.
Yeah. It's a unique window of time, though, for her, where she needs to use this money, and she has an opportunity to step up that renewal.
So does she have enough storage area that some of these may, they might not all be plugged in next week? She may cycle them in, or you're not sure?
These are delivery and install. We do not have a ton of storage area.
You don't, huh?
She does not have the storage she would like even for commodities, let alone equipment.
And I will say that we have older schools, so... That 22 didn't bother me because I just know that, you know, look at the age of our schools, and, and kudos to her.
And I think, you know, the milk coolers are one thing that's pretty self-explanatory. The serving lines, which you, you know, you occasionally see, that's about updating equipment, but also updating efficiency of getting more kids through. And the newer serving lines often have like the hot areas and the cooler areas and that sort of thing. So it's also, you know, in some cases, it's an improvement to the program efficiencies as well.
And Ms. McCabe, the other question that I have, so on number three for the Sources of Strength, the 65,000, that's a one-time expense? That's not an ongoing, right?
I'm not positive.
And Ms. Gramata is our, is our, I thought our expert in this. It is a one-time, this is, right now, and Ms. Gramata, correct me if I'm wrong on this, we're relying on Sources of Strength to partner with us when we provide training. This allows us to have our own in-house trainers, which will have a significant decrease in cost over time.
So it's a one-time expense to train the trainers?
Correct. We now have our own certified trainers, correct?
Yes, and we're trying to build the numbers so that we can support all the schools a little more easily, and then also get to a level of called district trainers, where we don't have to pay sources to come out, which they'll be here next week, but to come out to certify our trainers, we'll be able to do that in-house to hopefully help sustain the program, because if we don't do that, it would be very difficult to sustain.
That's great, and I believe wholeheartedly in Sources of Strength. I just wanted to try to understand, because it's being funded through a grant, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be an ongoing expense that we would need. So it's a one-time expense to train our trainers and keep everything in-house, which is going to be so much better for us moving forward.
Yeah, it's $500 a school for returning schools each year, which the schools are more than willing to pay. And then there'll be a little bit, like, every three years, sources will have to come back out to recertify the district trainers, but it's not, it's not crazy, yeah. So, and we'll also be, 35,000 of that is to have a T for T, where you all are welcome to come to the four-day training, if you wish, to learn more about sources and really get the in-depth knowledge, which is like the first step you do to become a trainer. So that's June 20th, I think, 20th to 23rd, so more information to come.
Thank you, Ms. Gramata, for that wonderful program that you brought to CCPS. When I first met you, and I was like, you know, all the ideas I had, and you were like, oh, well, this is a program. I was like, yes! So I'm just very thankful that you brought that here, and it's implemented, you know. I can't thank you enough for that.
Absolutely, thank you.
And again, as an added note, she and the team are going to be at our MAB conference this year, sharing a hot topic session on the Sources of Strength. Because again, there are people throughout the state who have not heard of this.
No.
And I think, you know, a lot of local board members are going to get excited, I think, about the program.
You're a constant commercial.
Nice little plug. Little plugs in there.
Any other comments or, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion, a motion for approval of commissioning feasibility studies for capital additions to Freedom and Sykesville.
So moved.
McCabe, um, second, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Now, Ms. McCabe?
This item is brought for your approval based on your discussion at the two work sessions you conducted following the report of the SARC. You also toured both Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle Schools to further your understanding of the layout and use of each school, and to see the site footprints as you continued to reflect on the SARC options. At the conclusion of the second work session, the board stated its desire to consider redistricting options in concert with a comprehensive consideration of the capital program. In order to fully understand the options for additions at Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle, the board asked that I seek approval to commission an architectural and engineering feasibility study for Freedom Elementary School and Sykesville Middle School. The feasibility studies will provide needed information to help determine what level of additions the two school sites will need. If approved, results of the feasibility studies are anticipated in the spring of 2023. Approval this evening allows staff to define the scope and begin the procurement process. This item would return to the board for final approval in the future as an award of bids, in the award of bids.
Ms. Wegney?
I think based, you know, we've had two really great work sessions and the tours of the schools. I think it was very eye-opening. I think we came to some very good conclusions. I think commissioning the feasibility studies is a, is a good idea. I'm absolutely convinced about Freedom. I'm not quite there yet for Sykesville, I guess is how I would phrase it. I think from a Freedom perspective, they've been over capacity for quite some time. They're projected to be over capacity and getting much worse into the future. I think any one of the plans that the SARC community, or the SARC group put forth had, you know, need for additional space at Freedom. And when we were there to tour it, it's clear that they are literally using every single space that they possibly can, plus six portables, right? Or a quad and a double. So I think it absolutely makes sense to do the feasibility for Freedom, especially given that there are a lot of constraints that we talked about with, you know, stormwater management. It's a very small site. It's one of our smallest sites across the county, so trying to figure out how and what we can fit there, I think, makes a lot of sense. Sykesville, they're at the point where they have one classroom outside, right? The rest is office buildings, or office space for teachers and administrators. So just trying to understand, and over the next couple of years, their enrollment is actually expected to go down for a couple of years and then pop back up. But I do think that we, like, I kind of want to see, like, so the enrollment numbers, I've heard that there's potentially a lot of noise in the enrollment numbers for this year, for September 30th, because we had a lot of surprise kids show up, and just trying to understand how and where those kids are and how it relates to the whole county. So I'm not sure that I'm, that I'm all in on spending the additional 100,000 for a feasibility study for Sykesville, but I clearly think Freedom is necessary. I'm just curious to get other folks' thoughts on them separately.
May I offer a bit of a response to that? I understand where you're coming from, and to go back to Superintendent McCabe's lead-in on this tonight, this would just be to commission the process to begin, but it wouldn't be to approve one or either study. So I would at least request some consideration from the board that we consider letting us scope it and letting us submit it to bid, kind of under a three-tier option of what would be your cost for this school, what would be your cost for that school, what would be a combined cost should we award both schools to you, just to see what the bid market looks like. But you'd still be under no obligation to award, you'd still have the full flexibility as to what you award, which is when the real cost would come into play at that future board meeting.
Okay, so, right, so we're not actually saying, we would have to go out and do the bidding process, and we would see how much the feasibility study for Sykesville would cost before we would have to take a vote on that?
It would go out to solicit RFPs. There'd be the committee that meets for the, it's a professional, professional services, I think is what we call it. There's the technical review as well as the cost. All of that would come back to you. And I'd like to work with staff to scope it that way, or scope it and frame it that way, to see, you know, what would the market say if we bid it under those different options? And you could say yea or nay that night to one or both, the night in the future when the award of bids is in front of you.
Right, okay, so we're not actually making the approval to spend the money at the moment? We would still be able to...
And like we, like we shared a little bit the night of the, I guess, the second work session, 100,000 is our best estimate, and it's been a bit since we've, it's been a few years since we've commissioned a feasibility study. Let's see what the market says. Maybe, maybe we're off on that. Maybe we're off to the good on that, and it would be a little more, you know, palatable to the board that night.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that clarification, Mr. O'Neil.
More questions? And I differ a little bit. I think we got to do them both. I think, I think boards get afraid of redistricting. They kick the can down the road. I don't feel comfortable putting kids on a bus for another, whatever, 30 minutes without considering what can be done with the facilities we have. And, and I agree, Freedom needs it more, but, but Sykesville still does have a portable, and whether it's another classroom or offices, they're using them. And I just feel like we got to do it. I think the point's well taken. We're not, we're not spending any money tonight. We're saying, do the bid process, well, we're spending a little bit of money, but we're not spending a lot of money tonight until we say, award this. But I just feel like we couldn't help COVID, and that pushed this back from when we knew we had to do it. And I just feel we got to keep moving as quickly as prudent, and I just feel like the feasibility studies, you know, who knows, maybe, maybe Freedom's going to cost a small fortune, and Sykesville's more reasonable, and we can adjust kids differently, but I think it's so hard to make those decisions without knowing all the facts.
And I was trying to respond just to the question of cost, but to that point, I think it's also valid to say, you're not gaining, you're not, you're not losing anything if you say, let's begin the procurement process. And if in two or three months, however long that takes, you feel differently as a whole or a majority about one or the other, that'll be fine. But also if something else comes up in that window of time, and suddenly you all feel very strongly about both, you haven't forfeited, you're still moving forward with a process that will get you as much information as you'll need, but you're not yet committing to the company.
We're gaining the process, though.
Right.
If we waited two or three months and said, oh, we want to do this, then we're going to wait two or three months.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
If you get to two months and say, wow, I wish we had done Sykesville, then you have to start the procurement part of that process then.
Any other comments?
I agree with you, Mr. Kyler. I think we should move forward with doing the feasibility study at both of those sites. And as we're, as you were just pointing out, and you did a great job, thank you for sharing that, clarifying it for us. But again, it's not that we're spending the money at this point, but, you know, you're just going to be allowed now to get both of the projects out to bid, and...
Yeah, we're keeping the process moving.
We're keeping it moving, and we'll get some answers.
Right, I mean, one of the reasons why I was asking the question was because we haven't really had a chance to get the feedback from the commissioners, like, at the joint meeting that we're going to have, and really, before we spent any money, right? Like, I don't want to spend $100,000 on a feasibility study that we don't think would ever actually come to anything, right? Like, if the commissioners didn't agree. But the fact that, the clarification that you just made is that we're, we wouldn't be making the decision to spend that money until after we've had a chance to talk to the commissioners. So I'm good.
And I think, and the tour, and you alluded to it a little bit tonight on the, how you calculate enrollment, I think we also need to stay focused on that and push the state as much as we can because that's costing us state money that we could otherwise be getting.
Agreed.
So we need to focus on all of it. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the approval of Carroll County Public School Negotiators.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McCabe?
Each year in September, we bring a list of staff members for you to approve to serve in the collective bargaining process on your behalf. Upon approval, I use this list of staff to select members to serve on bargaining teams or to support the collective bargaining process.
Board members, any comments or questions?
I just wanted to make a comment, like, every year when I see this list, I always think, wow, that's a lot of people to be on the list. But just so that the public knows, that not, not many of these folks tend to get called in. It's just anybody that might need to come, be pulled in as a subject matter expert on a particular item.
Right, could be on a team, could be like a subject matter expert, could be people supporting us putting together parameters, even though those folks might not be sitting at the table, but they have knowledge of your parameters because they're helping us build data or, or language that would ultimately be in the contract. Or, Ms. Jordan looks gentle sitting here crocheting, but we actually need this number of people.
Which, that blanket is beautiful. I've been admiring it. I'm like, wow, that's really pretty colors.
Board members, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the approval of proposed revisions to the citizen participation at board meetings.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McCabe?
This item returns as an action item after being brought for discussion last month. As we've discussed, that we have had many speakers at recent meetings, often waiting outside with staff, doing their best to support prospective speakers and bring folks in and out of the boardroom based on available seating. We wanted to discuss ways that may streamline the process and allow everyone the same access or opportunity, and perhaps better organize the process when there are many people in attendance who would like to speak. I'll also add to that, that in getting the results back from public comment, some of the concerns from public comment dealt with the process we would use for how speakers would be selected, the number of speakers, and the limit of 15, limiting topics that people could speak on, and having speakers disclose which school their child attends. So those were the major themes that came up in the public comment.
Ms. Wegney?
And Ms. McCabe, I want to, I want to thank you for bringing this up tonight. I think that there are definitely some changes that need to be made to this based on what we've heard from public, the public. I think what we were trying to accomplish was we were actually trying to make the process more transparent and more organized, right, and make sure that we allowed for the maximum number of people possible, right? Like, I think our guidelines used to say only 10 speakers.
Right.
And we've made it 15, and at certain meetings in the past, we've actually heard from upwards of 25, right? Like, we really have tried to make an attempt to hear from as many people as possible. But it can be a little bit chaotic during those meetings where you have 50 cards, and we're up here trying to very quickly say, okay, well, these people are here on this topic, and let's try to pick three from them, and they're here to talk on this topic or this direction, and let's pick three from them. And it's very chaotic to try to pull off in five minutes and be fair about it, right? So that's actually what we were trying to avoid, like, we want it to be transparent and organized, right, while still hearing from as many people as possible. So, but I understand folks' concerns, for sure. And I think that we should make it obvious that the board, we're not going to be the ones selecting the speakers, right? I mean, it, we're basically going to put forth some criteria of, okay, well... right, I mean, it, it, we're basically gonna put forth some criteria of, okay, well, I'm not even sure exactly, so, it would be, you know, that we would group folks by topic that they wanna talk about, and make sure that we had representation from each one of those topics that was brought up, right, and, and, but, you're like, are you speaking for it or against it, and make sure that we had representation from both sides, and maybe it might be, well, if you, if you had already spoken at two or three recent meetings, then, you know, you'd give preference to someone who hasn't come before, but has signed up, you know, so, so maybe something like that in terms of selection criteria, but I think maybe folks would be more comfortable with it if we made it very transparent about everybody who signed up, and, and what topic they wanted to discuss, and, and which direction, just so we can say, like, he, here is everybody who signed up, and, so, just be very open and transparent about it, so.
We can do that, we can have a list of everyone who signed up, what the topic was, and how they felt about that topic, and people could read that on, on the website.
Okay, and I think there were also some comments about speakers not being required to be a citizen of Carroll County, like, so if you have a, if you're a parent that lives outside the county, or if you're a teacher that lives outside the county but teaches here, you still wanna give, they're a stakeholder, you still want them to have the opportunity, and you don't necessarily have to have students in the system, but we would wanna understand what the person's tie to the school system is, are you a vendor, are you a teacher, are you a parent of kids in the school system, so if we would just maybe, and, Mr. Omeelia, you might have some wording for something like that that would help us out?
Sure. And I, I sent something to Mrs. McCabe earlier, and I agree with you on everything that you've just said, and it kinda goes along the lines of what you said earlier about tweaking, because it becomes necessary, as we hear and we consider what people say, we recognize that those suggestions are meritorious. So, starting with citizen, I know it wasn't the intent when this policy was written way back when, but this is a good time now to take out the word citizen, and change that from citizen participation at board meetings to public participation at board meetings. Going down to the policy statement, under Roman numeral three, instead of Carroll County residents, my recommendation is to change that language to persons with a connection to the Carroll County Public Schools who wish to speak in an upcoming meeting. That would take care of everything you just said about the vendor, about the business owner, the property owner, the one person said, suppose I'm a parent, but I don't have custody of my child, I live out of county, it would address that as well, because that person clearly would have a connection with the Carroll County Public Schools. With respect to the concern over the selection of speakers somewhat being possibly biased, what I've added here is, the selection of speakers will be conducted by staff upon neutral criteria with first priority being given to items on the meeting agenda. So, I, I think it's these ladies sitting right here who probably would be tasked with the review of the requests to speak, and the reason for priority being, being given to matters on the agenda is because they're gonna be considered right then and there, as opposed to somebody who wants to speak on something more general, which perhaps could be at a subsequent meeting. And I think that's a fair approach, I, I should note, I also sent to Mrs. McCabe today what the state board does, and the state board limits speakers to ten, and you've gotta sign up well in advance.
And it's across the whole state?
And it's across the whole state, and they consider issues that tremendously impact everybody, so, the idea is to be viewpoint neutral, the idea is to be fair, to provide a way that we can have an orderly process, and, you know, while maintaining neutral time, place, and manner restrictions, that's my thought.
And, and of note, tonight, we had ten, so.
Perfect.
All of them would have done it, they would have known ahead of time that they were speaking, before, when we had thirty or forty, these poor ladies would try to separate and judge and do whatever, and do it as fairly as possible, it wasn't transparent, but that meant if we took fifteen, there might be fifteen more that came, signed up, and waited, and now they're finding out they're not gonna speak, so, I, I think we're trying to make it more fair, we're trying to make it more transparent, and, again, I think anybody reasonable recognizes, we, we can't spend two or three hours with public comments because fifty people show up, that, that would be nice in utopia, but you just can't, then the same, one of the, one of the fifty speakers would tell us that our meetings are too long, and we oughta do something about it, you know, so, so, yeah, so I think all this makes sense, and, and we need, and, and there was chaos outside, there was some aggressive behavior outside that I think our security handled quite well and bent with quite well, but, that, that shouldn't be, and, and it shouldn't be first come, first served, well, you get here at three o'clock, you're, you're gonna speak, and the person that has to work and gets here at four thirty is already blocked out, so, it, it's a good system, I think, good intentions, and I think we listen to public comment, and we all have some more comments here yet, and, and we, we need to tweak this, but we need to do it.
And, and if I could follow up on that with one additional point that I know you all understand, but perhaps members of the community don't, we're talking about public comment at a regular board meeting, we're not talking about public board, public comment at a special meeting, for example, when we're considering a redistricting, or god forbid, a school closing, where we would have the meeting typically at a high school in the auditorium, and we might have fifty or seventy speakers lining up to speak about, the line should be drawn over here, not over there, that's a very different process, that's not what we're talking about here.
Dr. Dorsey.
I'm glad to hear that we're looking at tweaking this some, because again, you know, as I've reviewed it all, and as I've listened to comments and read comments, it's the optics of the whole scenario, it made it look like, you know, we're, we're trying to censor who we want to listen to and who we don't want to listen to, and it gives the impression that we're really not open to hearing from our citizens, so, that piece, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, we're, we're being above that, because again, we do want to hear from the public, what we're saying at this point is that, again, we want it to be in line with having an orderly meeting, and I know that certainly some topics can be quite heated, and, you know, I think when you're emotionally involved in a, in a topic, you know, y'all, it can be sort of a heated exchange of, of a viewpoint, but again, it's not our job to squelch that, we, we want to hear from everyone, so, again, I know we had some late, late meetings when we opened it up and really just listened to everyone, and that was the price that we paid, because we still had agenda items to cover, so, again, let's continue to look at this and tweak it so that, you know, we're not coming across as though we're trying to censor and, and not welcome feedback from the community, community, because that's not it at all, we really need to hear from everyone.
Okay, I just have a couple comments, first, I, I agree, it has to be extremely transparent, I think there should be a list of everyone who wanted to speak in the topic they were on pro con, and then a list of the people who actually were selected, so everyone can see everyone that was there, and, and, you know, have a better understanding, I think that would go a long way to alleviate some of the, the apprehension about this policy. Second, I think it should be on any topic related to the schools, unless, except personnel, of course, but anything else should be there, maybe, as was the, already stated, preference might be given to topics that were on agenda that evening, but if, you know, if you don't have fifteen or ten, or whatever the number is, and there's other topics that are, as long as related to the school, they should be able to speak as well, but my biggest, I guess, concern about this is, it's gonna be done on the internet, and currently, we have about forty-five hundred households in Carroll County don't have access to high-speed internet, and we, since I've been commissioner, we have spent tens of millions of dollars to try to alleviate that, and we're just putting another seventeen million into it, but even if, when all that money's spent, it's gonna take four, four more years to have all of that connected up, so that's a big concern, there'll be people that, because of where they're located, that no fault of theirs, but they don't have access to this. And, and that's a great point, and we had a, an option to call in, Ms. McCabe, do you think, should we have an option to bring a piece of paper in and drop it off, or?
We could certainly add that, we, in here, we have, alternatively, citizens may call the communications office at our phone number to register, we could add in another sentence that says, alternately, people could stop by the central office and drop off, yeah, or submit, yeah, submit a hard copy, we could add that as well.
Okay, it's, uh, Mrs. Herbert, we'll come back.
Same thing, I, I wanna thank everyone that, that got back to us, and definitely stated their position, and I knew we, we were trying to do the right thing, but people, and I understand, we've got to be transparent, and I think people were not trusting on who was gonna select, or how we were gonna select, or we were only gonna select people that live on this street, or people that live on that street, or people that teach in this school, so, we need to be transparent, and the other thing I was concerned about was with the internet, and I think we can work that out with, with our, our community, so, but, now, my question is, now that we are going to make these changes, will this have to go back out for another month before we vote on it, how does that work?
Well, if a member of the board wanted to make a motion to amend, that motion would need to be seconded, debated, and voted on, if the motion to amend is successful, then it becomes the main motion, that hasn't happened yet, so that would be one alternative, the other alternative could be to table, table the, the matter, circulate the proposed revisions, but I think you still have to vote on, on the proposed revisions.
But there's no requirement for another thirty, we're, we're reacting to the thirty-a-day comment, there's no requirement to put it back out again.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
So it's, it's, it's up to us, okay.
I just wanted to make sure, because I wanna get this done, I wanna get it completed, and I want it be, to be transparent on how we are going to do this.
Well, if you have a meeting like tonight, you won't need it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Ms. Batem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was a couple things I, you know, from the feedback received, and then also from, we heard from the, the community, the one was, speaker should not be required to disclose what school their child attends, now, obviously, we're not gonna release that to the public, where a child attends a school, but I think it's good to have, because then administrators get an idea, okay, someone's gonna be speaking, we know that there's a situation, you know, if they, the parent says there's a situation.
Let me ask a question, because we, I'm sorry, we've talked about this some, would you be okay if instead of saying what school, it either said what level, or what's your connection to the school system?
Yeah, if there was something like a checkbox, where it'd be like, child attends school, or grandchild, you know, teacher.
Not, not as a specific school.
And the thing is, I didn't, I wasn't really too concerned about that, because I think it'd be important that when a parent comes and says, and if the parent were to come and say, my child's being bullied, Mrs. McCabe can say, okay, we know that it's this parent, we know that their child goes to this school, she's gonna get ahold of the administrator immediately and find out, okay, what's going on, you know, have you taken care of this, so there, is there any documentation, what is something you have done, so I think those type of things are important. On the other side of that, then if we don't do that, then I do wanna make sure that if, like we had in the past, we do have a staff member immediately reach to that parent and say, let's go talk, and let's get this figured out, so, I mean, I just wanna make sure that the public also knows, we're not releasing information privately about, you know, where a child goes to school, it would just be for us, or the staff, in case they needed to follow up on something, so I think that was one thing that was really important. There has been talk about, you know, limiting the number of speakers, you know, what if we say, you know, fifteen in the beginning, and if there's, you know, we'll allow public comment at the very end of the meeting, I mean, unfortunately, we don't know what time that will be at the very end of the meeting, but, you know, whoever still would like to speak, if they wanna stay, and then they can speak at the end of the meeting, at the end of, end of, the very end of the meeting.
Let me ask on that, so, if it's those ladies, they're gonna look at the list, let's say they get thirty-five, and I guess, you guys could decide, it, it's such a hot topic, we're gonna do fifteen and five or ten at the other, but you almost have to notify them ahead of time so they know to come.
Yeah, absolutely, so, you guys would say, okay, you were chosen, and then if somebody wasn't chosen, like, you were not chosen to be the, the top fifteen, just saying, but please feel free to come, and we'll still have public comment at the end of the board meeting, that's the only thing I can think, and then, again, we don't know what the time's gonna be, because it's gonna be based on the agenda at that point, so that was just another one I was just thinking, actually, Commissioner Freiter, I wanted to ask, what is the commissioner's public comment policy that you guys have, was it two minutes, and it's three speakers per agenda?
No, we don't have any. Is that on, okay, we don't have any, um, limit on how many speakers per item, it could be as, as many as, as show up, and we do have a limit on time now, it's three minutes.
Okay, do they have to sign up ahead of time, or the?
They sign up that day, or we, since we're also online and virtual, they can call in as well.
Okay, right, and that's good to know, because I think, you know, the public needs to know too, is, you know, whatever the commissioners may do, I thought at one time it was two minutes that you guys had did.
It might have been, but it's three now.
Okay, was it under Rothschild, Rothschild? It was all Rothschild, one minute.
And you don't do an overall time limit, like a half hour or forty?
No, no.
If it's twenty of them, you let them do it?
Yeah, we haven't had a big problem with that, to be honest with you, except, like, with the budget, that's a whole different story, but, other than that, we don't have a problem with it.
Okay, and I think that's good to know too, is that, you know, you guys, you know, you try to, to fit also in the room, because you're, the room you guys have is very small, much smaller than this, so you need to try to fit that in.
And like I said, they can call in and do it over the phone as well, we allow that as well, we don't have too many of them either.
Okay, and I think the other one, other one was that, you know, speakers should not be required to provide their home address, well, Mr. Kyler, you send out letters, so I think it is very important, we do need to have the person's home address, you know, so that we can, you know, make sure that.
Absolutely.
You know, the information can be sent out.
And it'll stay confidential.
That'll stay confidential.
And that's another thing, we don't, we don't put those things out, even with the PIA request that people might do, we do not release other people's addresses and phone numbers and things like that, like, those are things of private information, internet, whatever, but, you know, those things are private information, and I do agree with, you know, CCPS staff, taxpayers, residents, Carroll County business, you know, business owners, you know, students, those things are extremely important, so, and, I mean, I'm happy with that, I mean, I, I think we're very, what we do is good, I mean, there are other board events that don't have any public comment whatsoever, it's, you can send an email and have a great day, you know, Annapolis, you can't just walk in there and make public comment, you gotta sign up ahead of time to go down to Annapolis and the State House, and, those, that's a lengthy process as well, so I'm, I'm just, you know, we wanna make sure that this is a fair process, there, there is no bias in this, you know, especially when I, we've had to sit here and put them in two different piles, for, against, you know, we tried to make sure two, 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 like, whatever, to make sure it was fair, as possible, so, I'm, I'm just wanna make sure that this is.
So, Mr. Kyler, we've talked about making a significant number of changes to this, right, so it's tough to kinda make those on the fly and approve it tonight, does it make sense to say all of the changes that we are, we have consensus on, and ask to have a new draft be bought, brought back next month that we could approve next month?
We can table the motion till next month.
Yes, and you can circulate the suggested revisions, subject to further tweaking at the next meeting, if you choose.
Right, so at the So at the next meeting, presumably, it would be closer to a final product. We might still have a couple of tweaks, but I think it might be in shape at that point to, to be able to make those on the fly. Does that, does that, Ms. McCabe, do you feel like you have an idea of what we had, with the consensus items that we had, or do we need to reiterate them?
I, I think I have a sense of what the consensus items were.
We need, if you have any, and if she has any, and then we've been all the way across.
Okay.
And, and Dr. Dorsey wants to talk one more time, but you, you, and you, and then hopefully you have what you want, so. You set?
I'm good.
I completely agree with that. We need to improve the organization to ensure we're not making mistakes along the way and missing those voices that we want to hear. And to that, I, I agree with Mr. Kyler, I believe it was you, who said we need to divide it by opinion and topic, and have the counter, counterargument. We could also include a miscellaneous topic, and then randomly select from there. But within those topics, we need a computerized algorithm that randomly selects. So a nurse who registered at eight PM, because she finally woke up after sleeping after her shift, doesn't get booted because somebody else was able to register sooner, which I think we were all consistent with that idea. Could we consider posting either a synopsis, kind of like what we have here with, excuse me, all the comments, a summary of all the different comments that were posted, or have, if somebody was, submitted their name to be registered for public comment, didn't get to speak publicly, could we have them type up and submit what they were going to say, and then post that publicly? That way, that's?
Yeah, we have that now.
Currently.
Okay.
And that's the other thing.
Sorry. And we didn't say it during this discussion, you said it earlier, we get hundreds of emails, and we say in the thing, you can leave a paper here, you can send us a message, you can, yes, yes. Because I think, I, I understand the concern that I want to come public comment. But the email, some of them I read five and six times, I, you know, so it's, it's a good way, too. So go ahead, sorry.
I just want to reiterate the fact, I'm very grateful for the, how many people came together to say that we want to be a part of this community, we want to speak at these Board of Education meetings from both sides. That was really refreshing to see. And thank you to all the students who can't come out every time and talk, or if you come just once. It's really great, and I want to reiterate how important it is to have your voice here and share those experiences, because it is very common for adults and community members not to understand the experience of a student. So there's stories that some of you tell, and nobody has an idea, except for the students, because we see it as so normal. So I'm very grateful for you all coming out to speak, so thank you.
Dr. Dorsey.
I just wanted to go back to one comment that Mrs. Bataglia made. She said she was willing to set a second time for us to hear a second group of speakers. Currently, we have a set time when the first group will speak, and when the second group will speak. Rather than having people wait till the end of the meeting, would we want to come up with another set time as a second time for citizens to participate? And I would like to have a recap of everything that we've said here, so that as we end, we're all on the same page with what we've heard.
Right, and I think to that point, Dr. Dorsey, we do have two sections on the agenda right now, so, for public participation. So if we were gonna say it's just gonna be fifteen speakers, and it's gonna be in the first section, then we'd need to amend the format of our agenda, right? But if we do want to have, I, I, I think it's gonna be feasibly diff, it's gonna be difficult, logistically difficult, to try to do a second session.
We don't usually have a lot who speak at the second session, but at least the opportunity is there. So I know Mrs. Bataglia mentioned that as a possibility, so, but in her context, she was saying that it would be at the end of the meeting, and...
Which is a random time.
I'm sure they want to share with us, but I don't know whether eleven o'clock at night would be a time they really want to share opinions with us, if that is the end of the meeting. And thankfully, we haven't been going that late recently, but anyway, I was just wondering whether we wanted a set time for a second time, or again, are we saying we don't even want to consider a second time? So whatever we are saying, again, I do want to have it all sort of recapped before we end the discussion.
Okay, so how about I do it this way? How about I make a motion to table the vote on this for tonight, but we can recap what we think we have consensus on to bring back as a, as a draft for approval next month? I'll make that motion. Oh, okay, sorry.
Wait for me a second. What if, I mean, oh, I'm sorry.
If we really recap, we, we could vote on it tonight. What if, what if we table it, and, and this was the superintendent's proposal, and let Mr. Mealy and Ms. McCabe get together, and you can email to us a proposed wording, correct?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, and then we can, we can react, and, and, and that, that'll keep us from going back and forth tonight. Are, are you okay making your motion to table that way?
So that we wouldn't recap for consensus?
Yeah, in other words, they, they would come up with what they see as what we've said, and then we can react to the email, and...
Well, well, you've got to be careful about not conducting public business by email.
So, so we can't react? You could send out the thing, we just can't react?
You, you, you'd need to continue discussions in another public meeting.
So, so then next meeting, we can tweak whatever you two have come up with, and modify.
If you need to.
Okay.
Right.
So, and if not...
Okay.
Mr. Mealy, can you explain to, because a lot of things we hear is that we do not tell someone their opinion's wrong. But, you know, there's been, there's been, you know, some words that have been used from one group, and other words used from another group against people. And can you please explain, because I've tried to explain, someone's opinion is their opinion, and we can't correct someone's opinion.
Well, under your current policy, you reserve the right to correct factual misinformation.
Right.
You do not, historically, nor do other boards, get into a back and forth over your opinion is wrong. And while I suppose many people think their opinions are fact, I think you astutely understand the distinction between a statement that is asserted as fact, but which is incorrect, from a, from a statement that's asserted as an opinion. So for example, you've got five million dollars in the budget for this item, and actually the budget contains seven point five million dollars. That would be a misstatement of fact, and so it would be highly appropriate for the board at the conclusion of the comments to correct that misstatement of fact. But if you were to get into a back and forth on, I disagree with your opinion, I disagree with your characterization, it, it would be counterproductive. It's never been a question-and-answer period.
And I, I understand each side getting upset with even name-calling, but again, I'll, I'll say this, and no, very few people have any idea how I live my life, who my family is. I've been called a racist more in the last four years than I was my entire life. And I don't correct them, because they have no idea what they're talking about, who cares? But it, it, it's frustrating, but then they get mad when we don't correct somebody else. So I think that's what we've got to do, correct facts when it's important, and, and we don't want to be here all night.
Right, we just stick, stick to the facts. That's it. You know, if someone makes a, you know, regarding money that's in the budget or whatever, but we definitely cannot, like, if someone starts, you know, you're getting correct so-and-so from calling them this, you know, I'm sorry, I can't control or people's thoughts and their feelings. And I can't, that's not my job to correct that. That's a violation of freedom of speech, when you shut someone down based on their opinion. And, you know, that's something that's not our job to do. It's not nice, but it's not our job to do.
And if you can, if you don't mind, Mrs. Herbert's been waving her card, before you make your motion, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to get back to when Pat and you talked about the time and the place. I, I've always felt that we do the, the public comments, and then we do our little spiel, and then we do one or two things, and then we're right back at public comment. So I think we either need to move it back a section in, in there, it's gonna, a time would be very difficult, because then we're right in the middle of something, and that doesn't work. But you, we, we need to, if you want to do fifteen and call it a day, that's what you all decide, or move public comment back before we do our discussion, or discussion area. So that's something I just wanted to throw out.
Yeah, I mean, I think that...
To tweak, to tweak this.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, the way, where we had it positioned in the agenda was a little tough, like, there could be presentations, and we may end up having like an hour and a half of discussion before we actually got to the, the public participation. So we had moved it up to try to, to try to get to people quickly, right? So they didn't have to sit here forever to, to make their public comment. But then we just, we, as a, sort of a compromise, we said, okay, but let's add a second section, right? So a little bit later on, if people wanted to stick around, they could make additional comments. So we, once we, once we finalize what we're doing with public comment, we probably want to rethink about timing within the agenda as well.
Another thing, I think it can be all based upon, you know, we can give an ideal time based upon how long the agenda is. If there's not that many items, and we move the public comment further back into the agenda, we can potentially say, you know, please be aware, potentially, you know, we will have additional public comment seven o'clock. Or, you know, if we know it's gonna be a long agenda, and there's gonna be a lot of things to discuss, potentially eight o'clock. So I think those that didn't make the first fifteen, they could get some type of idea when the next public comment would be. Does that seem fair?
Yeah, yep.
Does that seem fair?
Yep, okay. You ready to table?
Okay, so I will make a motion to table the vote on this item for this evening. I think we should, if Ms. McCabe would like clarification on any of the things that we've said or consensus, please let us know. But we'll bring that, a draft. She's taken lots of notes. So, but we'll, we would like for that draft to be brought back for approval at next month's meeting.
Is there a second to the motion to table? Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's tabled. And we're now into discussion items. The first item is Proposed Curriculum Guide for 2022-2023. Mrs. McCabe.
After curricular revisions are piloted the prior year, they are brought to the board. The list tonight reflects those items which were piloted last year and submitted for teacher feedback. Mr. Warnock is available for questions.
I was gonna speak for you, but I know better. Mrs. Herbert.
I'm on a roll tonight, okay. What school did we do the Health Education One-Credit High School course, if we piloted that?
So these are actually what is in place this year, and it is Health Two. So we looked at Health One, we had to add Health Two, so all Health Two is added this year.
Okay, so, so you're telling me now that there will no be, there will not be a Health One?
There's a Health One and a Health Two, because now it's, it's, you have two courses.
Yes, they're both half-credit.
Correct, and there's a Health Three. So what that is saying is that it becomes, there's a half-credit Health One, half-credit Health Two, and then the Health Three.
So you're putting...
And so it becomes a one-credit course for Health.
All right. I taught with that For My Day, and let me tell you, the For My Day killed all of our electives. What you're doing now is even gonna kill Health, Fizette even more, because we always partnered, partnered up with Ninth Grade Health and Health One. I totally disagree with this, and I would not ever vote for anything like this. Not on that one. Because the For My Day killed the elective so much, it killed the bands, it killed music, it killed art, their, their numbers, and I will not vote on anything for a Health One. They tried to do it the other year, and I flussed and complained, and I'm gonna fluff and complain tonight, because I will not vote for anything on that, because it's not fair to Fizette and all those other electives. That's it.
And, Ms. Herbert, can you, can...
And Mrs. Herbert did...
Because it's a scheduling problem. And they work well together when it's a Health One and Health Two. I don't care what the state does. I, we need to do what's right for our students in Carroll County. And that's not it, because I, I am, that For My Day has wonderful ideas and wonderful things, but I am telling you, as a teacher, it killed all electives, and I felt so bad for everybody that had to teach electives once. Dr. Echols used us as a pilot school at North Carroll. It killed everything. It killed, you know, chorus, the band, everything. So I, I lived through that. So I will not vote for that to be a one-credit course.
And while you're on your soapbox, the first advanced academic should be GT, because they're elementary.
Yes.
May they...
Thank you, Mrs.
Sorry, but I'm just saying, I, I just don't approve of that whatsoever, and I will stick to my guns, because that's not fair.
Yeah, I guess I, I had missed that. I was thinking that Health One was a half-credit, and Health Two was a half-credit.
Wait, that doesn't say it.
But is this saying that Health Two is a full credit?
Uh-uh. They threw them together, and they want it to be a one-credit course now, in 2026, and I will say no to that.
No, no.
Am I correct?
Don't you have Health One in Ninth Grade as a half a credit?
Correct, and a Health Two.
And then you have a Health Two a following year as a half credit?
Correct.
But then that all changes in 2026, correct? To a one-credit. That's what that looks like to me.
So the required course for classes of, no, students who graduate in 2026.
Mm-hmm, that'll change.
So that's, no, they are the students who are graduating in 2026, coming up. So any student who graduates in 2026 is required a full credit, a half-credit.
Well, I know they're, I know they're required a whole credit.
But it's over two course...
But it's over two courses, but this looks like this is just one course?
No, it is, it's over, right now, we have them over two courses. It's a Health One and a Health Two.
But this is confusing, it doesn't look like that.
Yeah, she should have broken it down, like...
That's, that's not what that says to me.
Health One, half-credit, Health Two, another half-credit. Like, I think that's what, it, how it should have been presented.
If I remember correctly, we had this discussion last year among staff, and, and we had determined that we were, that we were going to continue to schedule them as two half-credit courses, so that we didn't do what Ms. Herbert was just, was just afraid of. And I see Mr. King nodding his head in the back.
Yes, that is what we discussed.
And that is still in place, but the one-credit is a full credit. It's not broken down as a Health One, Health Two. They need one full credit, is what it's saying for any student, for...
I'm not killing the messenger, but I just want to make sure that they're not messing with these, these two one-half credits, because I would be livid, because that's not fair to Fizette, and I will stick up to those guys till I'm dead.
There is not, it's a Health One, a Health Two, and a Health Three. And it's structured in that way. What this is saying is that you need students who graduate by 2026 and beyond, need a full credit of Health. And so it would be the Health One, Health Two.
But when I read that, it says one-credit required course.
It is required for graduation.
Right, but it, but it doesn't, it doesn't break it down.
I agree with you, Ms. Herbert. It's confusing. If we could just have the format, I think, of this changed, so that it shows...
Sorry, but I'm a little temperamental about this.
Health One is a half-credit, and Health Two is a half-credit.
That's exactly what I was gonna recommend. We can just revise the chart and the format, just to make it a little clearer. No, that's okay.
And I actually had a question, because it says here, Health One, Two, Three, Nine through Twelve, the naloxone instruction and training for students.
Yes, so that is true, starting this year, all students in, because that's a free training, One, Two, and Three, they are receiving naloxone training. That is correct. And that actually started, and we piloted it last year, and it started this year, and it's gonna be implemented.
Because that's one of the easiest things to get their students trained in. Perfect, thank you.
And I just wanted to make one final clarification, under the Health Education, where it says, you know, Family Life and Human Sexuality, that there are no things that are coming in this year that are in alignment with the new state framework.
Correct.
There were some changes to Family Life and Human Sexuality that were, that did go through the Family Life Committee and were approved last year.
Correct.
And they were voted on unanimously by both that committee and this board as being And they were voted on unanimously by both that committee and this board as being excellent resources, but it has nothing, I just want to reiterate for the public, it has nothing to do with the state framework requirements.
Correct, we have not implemented Family Life with the new framework from the Maryland State Department of Education. That occurs again next year and then the following year.
Oh, you did?
Nope.
Oh, the card was still up. Any, any other comments, questions, discussion?
You're welcome, I'll make that one change after the release.
So, so do we need to, so I think we probably need to then, like, so I'll make a motion.
This is just for discussion.
Oh, this is just a discussion item? Oh, this is just discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll bring it back next month.
I was like, oh gosh, we need to vote. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, next discussion item, proposed high school program of studies. Mrs. McCabe.
Each year, proposed changes to the high school program of studies for the next year are brought for approval. The program of studies is intended to help students and families develop a well-planned educational program for high school and to meet graduation requirements. Again, Mr. Wernick is available for any questions.
Ms. Batavia.
Has there been any more discussion about the process of how those students are picked for particular courses in career and tech? Because I know there's a lot, a waitlist for a lot of them. But I also want to make sure that we're making it where, you know, if the student applies and if they submit a small paragraph that this is what they want to do going forward, I would rather see a student who wants to go into, like, Biomed. I would love to see a student who wants to go into, like, the veterinary field be chosen for that class versus a student who wants to be a real estate agent.
The process has not changed. It's the same process, it's academics, it's attendance, it's, it's the application.
Is there a way we can potentially look into doing that? Some way that they give a summary of what they want to do in their future and why they feel they should be chosen for that career and tech pathway?
We can always look at the process that we use to determine our career and tech student body, yes.
I mean, I know it's, it's a big field, you know, and some of them fill up faster than others, and I get that, you know, I get, I understand that there's a big pool of kids that want to do specific ones. But I think we need to try to make sure that the students who really want to take a specific pathway are given that opportunity versus a student that this is not something they plan on doing. So I, I want to make sure we're, we're giving that opportunity to these kids.
May we see the rubric again next time? For a career in tech? Because I think that's the, that's the, that's the problem, is that rubric.
Yeah, we can look at the rubric.
That would be a great idea. Thank you.
Ms. Agnew.
Oh, I just had a quick question on, so in the, in the high-level summary on page two of the cover letter, it says how science, so the courses that are being eliminated and the new ones to be added. I was trying to understand Chemistry One and Chemistry Two, it looks like they're being eliminated, but then under the Science section, we're adding back Chemistry of Earth and Space Science and Advanced Topics in Chemistry. Just trying to understand why we're considering that to be eliminating two others and adding new, like, are they, are they that different?
They are, so what we're looking at, if you turn to like page 126 and 20, 127, you can actually see the, the actual write-up of them. So, you know, in this course, it talks about each course and how they're, how they're structured. And so it's really taking a lot of the concepts and combining it within, but it's eliminating and really tweaking the, the courses with, within it. So you can see that we have Advanced Topics and Chemistry as well as, but Chemistry or Science really covers a lot of those standards within the regular Chemistry and it's just combining that to make a course that's more integrated.
So I would assume that would mean that a lot of curriculum changes would have to go along with that?
It's free, it's looking at the current curriculum and, and, you know, integrating it to align it more to the standards that, that are there so that when we're teaching it, we're teaching it as a combined chemistry of, you know, of Earth and space or chemistry that we're actually adding content to it to support the chemistry that, that, so it's not a standalone.
Okay. So just trying to understand, did, did we see those as changes to the curriculum?
And, and remember too, this is, this is the program of studies for next, next school year. This is not this year.
For next school year, okay.
So this is the plan and obviously our, our curriculum writers will be working this year over the summer. And then our, our curriculum supervisors and, and specialists are also, you know, available and we can get you connected if you have any specific questions too. But this was for, for next school year, not this school year.
Okay, and so, so we're trying to align it more closely to the standards. Did we see that there was a significant disparity between the standards and how our curriculum was lining up?
There is, as well as what, what are, you know, as students are graduating, the needs for certain, you know, areas and focuses as they go to college and as they, as they go into the workforce. You know, and again, it's looking at our, our standards from the state as well as what our college is looking for at this point, you know, and what is the workforce looking at. And we're trying to give our students, you know, the edge of the, the best courses to support them as they move forward with, with career and college choices.
Also, to that same topic of the Chemistry One being replaced, so you said this is in line with the standards, so was, how much of the curriculum is going to be earth and science-based versus chemistry-based? What's that ratio? Or is it integrated so that a word problem's gonna be earth and, okay?
Exactly, it's more of an integration style, yes.
And then also, I see there's a large elimination of early childhood development-related classes, yet there is the child development internship. Is that's what, what's replacing the three different classes?
Correct, so under our blueprint, we actually had to change some of the courses, the way they're designed at the high school level so that they mirror our pre-K and our private and public partnership-
Okay.
-programs. And so that's why they've changed and been tweaked within the way that they are the name of the course.
So then will the preschools at the, each high school, will that continue and that's what the internship is going to look like? Is it going to look very similar from the surface level? Or will the internship be at a private preschool?
It may be, it may be a private, maybe at our own preschools. The program has to change because under the blueprint, the director and the teacher cannot be the same within the program.
Okay.
And so currently, we have the director and the teacher of the program at the high schools as one individual. And so that has to change, there actually has to be, for the enrollment process, actually Maryland excels, then at that point, they have to be accredited. And so it's changing that program so that it's working to provide the students with, again, other opportunities possibly in, you know, in other programs within our school system, or it could be a private.
And so to that same idea, when the Maryland blueprint starts to initiate it more so and we will grow our pre-K enrollment, do we foresee students going to our elementary schools and helping and interning at those pre-Ks? Is that then separation of director and instructor?
Yes.
Okay.
And what we would also like to see is our public, I'm sorry, our private providers possibly use space within our own high schools, provide the services so that our students can then work right within that, that high school. I know that Francis Scott Key currently has that with a private provider who's using the space and so that they're there. We aren't quite at the partnership level, you know, where we're allowing students at that point into that private partnership, but we're hoping to continue to build that in future years so that we can, you know, bring in more students into our pre-K program that way and also help those private providers with, with space and help our own students with internships and other.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
You've done a lot of work.
Thank you.
Next discussion item is the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar. Mrs. McCabe.
Each year in September, the superintendent brings for discussion a proposed calendar for the next school year. The calendar is released for two months of public comment before returning for board action. My proposed school year 2023-24 calendar starts the day after Labor Day, so it will be September 5th, and ends on June 13th for students. It includes five inclement weather days. Winter break begins on December 25th with students returning on January 2nd. And spring break is Thursday, March 28th through Tuesday, April 2nd.
So four days for spring break.
It would be a Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday. This year, I think we just have the Monday.
Was it Friday, Monday?
Friday, Monday.
Yeah. Friday, Monday. Yeah.
Ms. Batavia.
We would use up all the snow days or emergency days for us because hurricane season, you never know too.
Right, right.
And flooding and whatever other storms. So emergency days would be used first before implementing any type of virtual learning.
Correct, and at this point, you know, we would have to get any plan for virtual learning approved by the state anyway. So, but yes, our plan would be just the same as it is this year, which is we go through all of our inclement weather days first traditionally before we do any kind of virtual learning.
Anybody else?
I think it looks like a good calendar.
Thank you, board members. The next discussion item is capital budget and fiscal year 25 to 29, capital improvement program request.
What's that?
Say again?
Oh, your mic isn't on.
Oh, my mic's on.
I'm sorry.
Okay, in September, we bring your CIP for discussion. It then is released for public comment before returning for board approval in October, in line with the state and local budget processes. The highlights to the proposed CIP are on the cover sheet, but I'll ask Mr. Kane to briefly address those highlights for you. I also wanted to note that we have continued to do well in recent years in terms of state participation. Not only do we have the two major projects, Career and Tech through the Traditional Capital Program and East Middle through the Build to Learn Act funding, but we have been successful in also gaining awards for other projects through other pots of funding that they have available. Last year, the, the state awarded us the Spring Garden HVAC and the Westminster High School Window Replacement Projects through the Healthy Schools Fund. And we just learned today that the state will also be approving two additional projects, Oklahoma Road Middle School HVAC and North Carroll Middle School Roof through the Healthy Schools Fund for next year. I wanted to thank Mr. Prokop and Mr. Kane for their efforts to always maximize state funding for us, but also note that our success suddenly puts us in a strange place where after a decade of limited capital funding and work, we now have projects active or on the horizon that exceed Mr. Marx's staff, staffing levels to manage. So this will be something that we'll have to discuss during budget time. Now I'll ask Mr. Kane to quickly cover the CIP highlights.
So this is the 24 capital budget and 25 through 29 capital improvement plan request. Two of the major projects that we've been talking about, Career and Tech and East Middle under construction. The 24 request is for, to the state is for the remaining state share of construction funds, so that's the, kind of the last installment from the state for those projects. This project, or I'm sorry, this, this request also includes a, a new project for the pre-K additions that are really to address the blueprint legislation. It's, it was noted in the facilities master plan that you approved back in June, but this is kind of a general project. It's just listed as pre-K additions. It, it has some budget estimates just based on rough square footages, but it's just kind of a placeholder to get something in, in the plan. There is a request in 24, that, that's part of the request to the county for some funding to do a study, kind of to look at one classroom additions at, at some elementary schools. The other change related to the blueprint is the, the plan for the last, I guess, decade has had kindergarten additions at the elementary schools that we didn't add kindergarten classrooms to back when the full-day kindergarten program started. They're still in the plan, but we did add pre-K classrooms as part of, you know, if we're gonna do a kindergarten addition, it would make sense to also add the, the pre-K classroom at the same time. So the, the size of those projects was increased a little bit by one classroom. And then the last kind of highlight to this plan that I wanted to, to note was that for several years now, the state, well, I should back up. How the state determines what they fund in a project is, is a complicated formula, formula, but one of the pieces of that is there's a state-local cost share formula that basically all eligible construction costs, they pay a share. Our, our share right now, the state pays 59% of eligible construction costs. Every, every two years, they recalculate what that percentage should be and it is as complicated as the operating formula for determining how they, how much money they give per student on the operating side. But for the past several calculations, we, Carroll County's been held harmless because the calculations that were done over the last several years would have had us dropping in percentage. The, the most recent calculation done, I guess it was last summer, not this past summer, but the previous summer, would have had us going to 52%. They held us harmless for fiscal years 23 and fiscal years 24. There'll be a new calculation done next summer for fiscal years 25 and 26. This plan kind of anticipates us dropping. The, the hold harmless that they, you know, they've been holding us harmless, basically, us and other counties that dropped tied to the blueprint. Basically, they said, well, until we know what the operational formulas will be on the blueprint side, we don't want to, we don't want to basically have counties penalized for dropping because there is some relationship between this capital calculation and, and the operational calculation on, on the foundation formula. So, but now that the blueprint's kind of passed and they're working it out, it's possible that we could drop when they recalculate it. I don't know whether they'll hold us harmless, but I wanted to put it in the future years just as a, you know, this is possible that we could drop so our state share on these future projects could be lower than what it's typically been. If, if we're held harmless, then that's good news in the future. We'll, we'll have more state funds and we'll have to use less local funds. But that is kind of a change that was put into this, into the out-year projects that I wanted to highlight, so. And I'd be happy to answer, answer any questions that you have about the, the rest of the document.
So thanks for that explanation, Mr. Kane. And I was also very interested to see that we're trying to hold the, the FCI index at 34% over the projection period. I think that's important to do, right? Like, I think some folks might be a little bit surprised by the magnitude of the numbers that are required to do that, but that was a reality that we came face-to-face with a couple of years ago, right? That I think at that time, we were saying we needed to infuse at least $45 million into the system every year on a capital basis in order to maintain the current condition-
Correct.
-of our buildings in aggregate. So I think that's a very important thing and it's good to note that, but there, there's a little bit of a ragged pattern of getting there. It looks like for next year, we've got 38, 39 million, and then it pops up to 59, 49, 32-
Correct.
67, and then it pops back up to 67. So, so it's a little bit ragged, but, but this is a reasonable layout of the projects that need to be done to maintain that 34% overall.
Correct, the, the raggedness is tied to, to the individual projects because it, you know, it, it never comes neatly in exactly 40 million. So it, one year, we may need 60, but then the next year, we may only need 20. So, so as long as over the six-year plan, we're, we're kind of meeting that target in the aggregate, then, then we will be able to maintain, you know, it, it's tough to, to look year by, you know, in an individual year- It's it's tough to to look year by, you know, in an individual year when you're talking capital projects that span years and and, you know, we have four, over 4 million square feet of buildings. So that that, again, that's why the numbers, it's a lot to take care of, so.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I'm I'm very much in favor of the the feasibility study for the the pre-K. Where, and similar to the the things that we're doing with with Freedom and Sykesville right now, I think we've got to understand the impact that the blueprint has and and how we would potentially handle it from a capital perspective moving forward. And, you know, while those those last four kindergarten, the last four kindergarten additions that had not gotten done in the past, I think that, you know, it it was possible that we could have lived without them, but now with the the pre-K situation, it's kind of pushed it over the edge of now now something does have to be done. So, so I'm in favor of those as well.
And they've waited 20 years for those.
You were still principal, I believe, when.
Well, I do note, though, that there aren't any, so there's a lot of HVAC replacements still. It looks like we've made pretty good progress on the roofs, right? We've been banging those out year after year, and and we're down to a last couple that are in dire need. But still a significant number of HVAC projects that need to be done. The one that jumps out, I think, is the Northwest for 20, am I looking at the right line? No, it's Liberty High School, I'm sorry, for 23 million. So I noticed that in this, in this CIP request, typically in prior years, we would have the next school on it that would be up for modernization. You know, sort of planning for that. I don't necessarily, am I missing it or? I guess it's William Winchester.
Page 30. Page 30, William Winchester. We see our feasibility study indicated again for that.
Okay. And I guess I would just, and it's not an immediate concern, I guess, for Liberty High School because at some point, Liberty High School was on as one of the potential next modernizations for high school. But we'd certainly want to understand what we're doing with that before we would go ahead with a with an HVAC.
So, so yeah, the the difficult thing, the the modernizations are prioritized in the facilities master plan, and the modernizations are prioritized using that functional and physical assessment. The the functional assessment was done only for schools that were built, constructed prior to 1980.
Right.
So those, since 2008, when that was done, those, I believe, 10 or 11 schools have been the only ones listed for modernization. East Middle was the first on the list, and we're we're just now doing East Middle. So second, you know, currently is William Winchester. The difficult thing at Liberty is the FCI score is is high, but it was built after, 1980, I believe, is the year it opened, which was right after the cutoff, basically, from the last functional assessment. So we talked about potentially updating that functional assessment prior to next year's facility master plan. And then that may reprioritize those modernizations. And next year's CIP plan, as far as the modernizations, may may be different based on that. And for William Winchester, there's a feasibility, funding for a feasibility study shown in FY 2025. So the the time to make that decision whether to do William Winchester or potentially there's another one would be in the next cycle before we're asking for funds, so. So, yeah, we we're aware, but we want to have the need that the HVAC system at Liberty High is is overdue. We don't want to lose sight of that, so we wanted to have it in here. If, obviously, it were to go on the modernization side, the HVAC project would go away because we would address it during the modernization, so.
Okay, okay. That makes perfect sense, and I definitely support updating that that study, you know, to include all schools, not just the ones built prior to 1980, just so that we have a better understanding going forward of what the needs are. Because, like you said, there were a lot of schools on it, but we've only done one at this point. But, yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. And basically, we're 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 talking about what are the next projects to to begin the the request for, to begin the spend for next year, but then what are the next ones up? So I think this is a reasonable progression, given the information that we know now. But the the request for projects starting next year might look different than they do now.
Right.
Right, okay. But just understanding that this is sort of the pattern of the capital spend that we need to hit in order to maintain the FCI score.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask the fun question because it seems like every time we have the CIP lately, I've been asking this because we hear a lot from the community. Why do we not fund playgrounds? Now, it's not saying we don't want to, it's why we don't. And the way that I've always felt it was described to me was, do you want HVAC done or do you want your playground done? Do you want a new roof done or do you want a playground done? So, like, we want to make sure the physical structures of our schools are taken care of because we don't want things to be like, well, we're not going to fix that, we're going to go fix something else first. We're not going to fix that, we're going to go fix something else first, and then things get worse. So can you explain as to why we typically don't?
Historically, we haven't done playgrounds even, you know, going back at the beginning of when I started, so 18 years ago, some time ago. Even when we built a new elementary, we didn't install the playgrounds. That that did change, I believe, at Ed Valley, we, maybe Pars Ridge. But the difficult thing for, as you, as you said, the difficult thing with replacing them is it's, there's competing interest, and sometimes our timeline for when we can actually afford it isn't the same as the community and the folks at the school. But I think that as far as the CIP, you, as you see and hear i- in the, in the report, in the document, the focus of the CIP really, you know, for the last decade or so, has been the roof replacements and the HVAC projects. We're we're not getting those funded at the rate at which we need, and we're not getting fully funded on our requests typically. So add, you know, we could certainly add more projects in, but the reality is, is they would be behind HVAC projects and roof projects, which if they fail, can shut a school down.
Right.
So our focus has been on those systems that are critical to keeping the school open and realizing that even with those limited, you know, two types of projects, we're still not getting them fully funded. But.
And I think there's more leniency, too. When a PTA and a PTO or boosters fund the playground than that would be for CCPS because if CCPS were to fund it as a capital project, it's basically going to be a generic playground.
It would be standardized.
Yeah, and and it wouldn't be, no community input on to what goes there, and it has to go out for bids, so you would have to find the contractor. Where the PTA, PTOs necessarily don't have to do that. They don't have to put out the different bids. Like, they they can find somebody, get community input.
Well, they still, they still do, they still do have to bid the projects because they donate the money to the Board of Ed, and the Board of Ed actually awards the contract because the Board of Ed owns the property. So playground.
It's like, I mean, it's a different bid process, correct?
It still runs through our purchasing department.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm wondering, like, we don't get a list of bids and.
But they get to spec, like, for instance, Hampstead was
Right.
$160,000. If if it were a cookie cutter thing, it might have been $90,000. So they get to spec it, they get to raise the money, but then they have to do it through the bid process.
Right.
They can't, because I I remember days when we did some storage buildings, and we had guys that would have donated, but they couldn't. It had to go through. And then I remember, like you alluded to, and I was on the other side of the fence, we joke about it, they're going to build an elementary school, they're going to build a middle school. The fields aren't going to be worth anything. Nice, that substituted a word. There aren't going to be playground equipments. So the Rec Council, and that's what the PTOs and PTA's need to do, we would start planning before they even started school construction on, we need to do self-help projects. We need to buy ball dirt. We need, we're going to need to do, you know, and and again, it makes sense. An elementary school got a field set up for phys ed and recreation, not to play a softball game with 16-year-olds. So we would change the backstops, we would do all kinds of stuff. And and I think it's gotten better with the new schools on what gets done, but it's still, it needs to be replaced. And I I think, and and Mr. Neal did a, some good comments on that a couple meetings ago. I don't think individual schools would be thrilled with the product they were told they're going to get, and it's going to happen in three years. You know, they, these guys have done some good fundraising and got them very quickly.
What I was going to ask about the bid is like, like, when we do bids on a roof, we get three companies, and then we take a look at that, whereas playground necessarily, like, when a PTA, they find the company they want.
No.
No.
It still has to follow the Board of Ed's policy.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm wondering, like, is it as much of a, you understand what I'm saying, like, is it is it as much of a process that we go through with roofing, doing roofs and HVAC as PTAs and PTOs would do?
Well, we don't, with a roof project, which is a larger, you know, a million, $2 million, we have to design it, we have an architect design it and put a package. With the playgrounds, it can be more, you know, a one-page kind of description of what they want to the playground companies. They come out, talk to the principal, talk to the school staff and and get an idea of what they want, and then they give proposals based on on that. So it, so it's not quite, it's still a formal process, but it's, I wouldn't say as involved or as, not cumbersome, but, you know.
Rigorous.
Yeah, rigorous. You you don't have a set of drawings that are, you know, 50 pages with a with a document of specifications. That's probably 300 pages. It's not quite that.
Right. I mean, it's not saying that we we would not want to fund playgrounds, but again, you know, I like how the communities get to pick. It kind of like fits, you know, the school colors and it fits the community's needs. Where, you know, if it was CCPS that did that, it wouldn't be. It'd be one of them metal totlots you used to put in there, Kyler. Wood, big splinters, yeah.
Any other questions, huh?
Thank you.
Any unfinished business or new business? Who was first? Okay, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to remind the public, you know, we do have the CAC meeting September 28th at 7:00 PM here in the boardroom. And I actually wanted to bring it, bring up something that, interesting enough, I saw on social media. There was a post about how some of the elementary, like, some of the lunchrooms particularly, had a community free bin in the lunchrooms. And so, like, let's say a student didn't want to drink their chocolate milk, they could put it in the the free bin, of course, in ice. And then typically, that's when it, ice cream time or snack time, the students can go up and they can grab it from the free bin if they would like. I know there's been concerns about, like, allergies or things like that of student sharing, but is there something that would be nice, you know, I think, to help with students that could, you know, if they wanted to do something like that? Is there any way we can look into that and talk to Karen and in the cafeterias and see if that's something that potentially, even if it's PTA, PTO sponsored, I don't know, but.
We can definitely look into it and see what's happening, yeah.
Sure we can. I just, I would have some just concerns about food allergies, dietary restrictions for students. So obviously, you know, some of our students have very carefully planned out meals. Some of our younger students might, you know, that might be difficult to navigate, but of course, we can, we can look into it, but a couple of concerns off the top, but we can look through it.
Yeah, I think it'd just be good to cut back on waste, too, because a lot of times, we throw away so many milks or waters or chips or fruit or whatever.
I'll put my old elementary principal hat back on for a while. And and, you know, with the prevalence of food allergies, we are very sensitive to that in our schools. And the last thing we want is a situation where a student might see an item that might be available, but yet it's not part of their dietary plan, or it could have a life-threatening impact for the student. So as as noble as the idea is, it could have some challenges, but at your direction, I'll, I can definitely look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Krabs, I just had one thing that I wanted to bring up real quickly. I was speaking with Delegate Krebs over the weekend, and we were talking about funding issues and blueprint and, you know, pre-K implications and operational implications. And I think there was a report recently that was released that showed that Carroll County had the the lowest funding per pupil of any county around the state. And and obviously, we have some concerns with that, right? But one of the things that that Delegate Krebs recommended is, we used to have, I think we may have gotten away with it, away from it during COVID times of, but we used to have a a meeting with the delegation every year in, like, the October or November timeframe. And she said that they'd be very interested in reinstating that meeting this year if we wanted to get together, and she'd be happy to reach out to, there's a woman on the the Ways and Means Committee that apparently is very familiar with the funding formula, you know, could help us understand how and why it was developed and what implications it has for Carroll County. She'd be happy to ask that person to to come out and and join that meeting. So I just wanted to throw that out as a as a possibility. I think that could be a really good work session for us, kind of linked to blueprint and and speaking with the delegates on top priorities.
And we've had a change in in the delegation, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Anything else? 3:30 PM, Monday, October 3rd, there's a strategic plan work session in the boardroom. 5:00 PM, Wednesday, October 12th, board meeting with citizen participation in the boardroom, 125 North Court Street, Westminster. May I entertain a motion to adjourn? Second?
All second.
Anybody opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, opposed.